Alright, good afternoon, everyone. If those of you want to put your cameras on and clerk knows that you're here for attendance. And I will now call the regular meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. The first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson moves it. Is there a second or? Counsel Kunst, any, I've got to get my participants up. So no discussion, no questions, all those in favor?
Hi.
And that carries, thank you. Next item is adoption of the minutes, regular council meeting November twenty-third, special council meeting November twenty-eighth, and special council meeting for budget purposes November thirtieth, kind of a motion to adopt those three sets.
So move.
So Arneson and the second or, also Kunst, Aaron, any errors or omissions? So you now don't call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carries, thank you. We have no delegations. We do have a presentation from staff regarding the two sixteen street corridor. Mr. Backen?
Thank you, your worship, Mr. Seffy and Mr. Cordero, I believe, are present and would begin by having Mr. Seffy do a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Backen. Good afternoon. Thank you, your worship. Your worship, the intent of this presentation is really to provide counsel with some information. As counsel is aware, the concerns of the residents along the corridor, staff have been trying to address for a number of months and there have been significant submissions from various members of the public. So really, the intent with this presentation is to provide information to counsel as to what staff is hearing in terms of the concerns and really just a couple of points. One is the jurisdiction. There seems to be some confusion as to what authority we might have on certain sections for certain types of modifications, if you will, or restrictions. And then following that, what are the implications, if you will, of? The? Do you hear me, your worship?
Yes, yes, I can. Yeah, you're fine. Thanks.
Sorry, something happens to my screen. I just lost it. In any case, the other part of it is enforcement. And in particular, the fact that the township of Langley is not structured, we do not have the ability to enforce violations for moving vehicles. So really, the point of the presentation that Mr. Cordero is going to go through is really just to provide information to counsel. So counsel's aware of how staff has been dealing with, with the concerns that have have been and continue to come to staff.
Thank you, your worship. This is Mr. Cordero. I'm going to share my screen now for the presentation.
Thank you. While you're doing that, Counsel Ferguson, you had a question? Oh, you're muted, Counsel Ferguson.
My question is waiting to the very end when he finishes his presentation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to present today, your worship. I'm going to go through some background slides, describe some of the measures that the township has undertaken, particularly on the north side of Highway one, and works that have been completed, provide some clarity in terms of areas of jurisdiction between the Ministry of Transportation, TransLink, and the township, including the regulatory framework, which is primarily through the Township Highway Traffic Bylaw and also the South Coast British Columbia Transportation Authority Act. That act is the framework under which TransLink operates. And then some next steps. So as a background, the Township Master Transportation, which the last time it was revised, it was adopted in two thousand nine, identified two sixteen street as a four-lane arterial roadway, future four-lane arterial roadway. And also, it included the two sixteen street interchange. That's been consistent through various versions of the Transportation Road Network Plan dating back to, I'd say, the early nineties to late eighties. Also, one of the factors to consider is the TransLink major road network. When TransLink was established in nineteen ninety-nine, a major road network was established. And two sixteen street between eighty-eighth Avenue and ninety-sixth Avenue has been included as part of the major road network since it was established. The designation of the road network usually meets some criteria such as designation of a truck route, regional function of the roadway, and also things like the number of buses. Also, to keep in mind is the Township Highway Traffic Bylaw. So truck routes are actually designated as part of our Highway Traffic Bylaw. And two sixteen street between eighty-eighth Avenue and ninety-sixth Avenue has been designated as a truck route since we began designating truck routes in our early version of our bylaw. So in terms of the corridor, some brief background. Due to the concerns with the corridor, council did direct staff to do a corridor study. We hired Urban Systems Limited to do that work. They were to complete that work before the interchange opened, but there were some delays. So the interchange did open in September twenty twenty, and the phase one of the study did not did not be, was not completed until October of twenty twenty. We do anticipate phase two of the study will be completed in the spring or summer. That is dependent upon things such as what's currently happening with COVID. The idea was to do the second phase when traffic patterns had stabilized and the growth had basically established itself. And we're not sure if that's going to happen, when that's going to happen. So there are works that were done before the interchange was opened and works that were done shortly afterwards. That includes signage, changes to traffic control, and numerous road improvements. The next slide is north of the highway. The items that are in green were those that were completed before the interchange was was opened or shortly after in September of this year. They included some new pedestrian crossings north of eighty-eighth Avenue, modification of the existing one, some new sidewalk connections, new signage for schools such as speed reader boards, new guide signage for trucks at eighty-eighth at two sixteen street, new walkway connections, as I mentioned, new cycling facilities that were incorporated as part of the widening of the highway between Highway one, sorry, widening with two sixteen street between Highway one and Telegraph Trail. We also participated and are still working with Topham Elementary on a school travel plan. And that was done, started last year. So this work has essentially been completed. It also includes signage for trucks, as I mentioned, for the guide signage, and we also did install signs related to trucks for no engine brakes. And that's basically north of the highway. Then south of the highway, there's been not as much work done, but we did an improvement at eighty eighth, eightieth Avenue at two twelve street with a pedestrian crossing and a left turn lane. We also did some curve improvements at the seventy-four hundred block of two sixteen street to accommodate the movements going north and south there, and we slightly changed the elevation of the roadway. There is works that are going to be done shortly at the intersection of two sixteen street and Glover Road by the railway and by the Ministry of Transportation, which the township is partnering. We anticipate that happening early in the new year. So this is just a photo that shows some of the infrastructure that was in place by September. So we can see the speed reader boards. There's actually markings on the pavement that say school, various configuration of sidewalks or multi-use paths along the corridor. So in terms of the school area signage, just to give you a little bit of a background on what was done, the existing school signage that was in place in September met TAC guidelines in terms of it being a school area without a thirty kilometer per hour speed zone. The phase one of the corridor study looked at all the measures the township had done, including those speed reader boards, the pavement markings, the various improvements, and they noted that the signage was appropriate and effective for that class of roadway, that arterial classification. In October, council passed a resolution for a thirty kilometer per hour school zone in front of the two schools, being Topham Elementary and a Cold of Voyager. So staff have implemented the school zone in front of a Cold of Voyager because that portion of two sixteen street is not an MRN roadway. I'll speak to that a little further down in the presentation in terms of the limitations the township has on the MRN roads in terms of signage. But we have not implemented the signage in front of Topham Elementary because of its road classification and consultation and approval from TransLink that is required. So this is the signage installed in front of a Cold of Voyager. Similar to a lot of schools now, we're also upgrading this signage with what we call rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Their radar, radar controlled units where a vehicle is going over thirty, a basically amber light start flashing. So that's just an advisory for the motor resetter exceeding the thirty kilometers zone. And this is being implemented in a lot of the school zones now that have thirty K signs. So in terms of school zone signage, I wanted to clarify, there is the South Coast PC Transportation Authority Act. Basically, it's the provincial legislation that was enacted when TransLink was formed that includes limits on municipal authority. So there are clauses in the act that limits the authority of municipalities to make alterations to the road that would influence the capacity of the roadway, and that includes changes to signage. So in front of Topham Elementary, two sixteen street is part of the MRN road, and so staff as requested by council forwarded the request for the thirty kilometer per hour zone to TransLink in November. We have since received a response from TransLink that they're deferring a decision on that signage until phase two of the corridor study is completed. They have noted that typically that type of signage is based on technical analysis and justification, just to keep that in mind. In terms of truck traffic, for all provincial highways, all numbered highways are designated truck routes. So Highway one and a portion of two sixteen street, just immediately north and south of the highway is under MOTI jurisdiction and is technically a truck route. The Township Highway Traffic Bylaw has several definitions in it that we should keep in mind when we're looking at truck traffic. There's a definition of a commercial vehicle, which is fifty-six hundred kilograms. That definition is primarily used for things such as trucks parking off of truck routes. So we don't want larger vehicles parking in residential areas, so we defined a commercial vehicle as fifty-six hundred kilograms. But in terms of truck routes, there's a second definition, which is a licensed gross vehicle weight exceeding eleven thousand eight hundred kilograms. That definition has been harmonized throughout the lower mainland now through the efforts of TransLink so that it is consistent with all municipalities in terms of a heavy truck and what's allowed to go off of, or required to be on a truck route. So in our Highway Traffic Bylaw, all vehicles exceeding eleven thousand eight hundred kilograms should operate on designated truck routes. Now, the bylaw does have some exceptions to that in terms of departure from a truck route, which I'll come to in another slide. But of relevance here is that two sixteen streets from Highway one to eighty-eighth Avenue is not a designated truck route in the Highway Traffic Bylaw, but eighty-eight, two sixteen street from eighty-eight Avenue to ninety-six is a truck route and has been designated a truck route for the last twenty plus years. The Ministry of Transportation has also been consulting with some of the township and some of the local residents, and this is the signage that was installed before the interchange was opened. So their signage eastbound on Highway one prior to one ninety-two and westbound prior to two thirty-two that essentially directs commercial vehicles to use those exits. Recently, the Ministry of Transportation through some discussions with township and local residents has proposed this additional signage. And it's an advisory sign that would be put at the two sixteen interchange to basically advise commercial vehicles going to two sixteen street that they should be doing local deliveries only. Now, my understanding is this signage would be installed in the spring by the Ministry of Transportation. The township in September, I believe, late September, installed truck route guide signs at the intersection of eighty-eighth Avenue and two sixteen street. What the township has done typically with its truck routes is we use positive guide signage to direct trucks to routes that they can use. Given the number of roads in the township, it's impractical to sign every road where a truck is not able to go on. So what we do is we use the positive signage, which is consistent with the practice in the lower mainland and actually is part of the TAC standards and guidelines. We have also installed engine brake signs, and these are signs that basically say, please do not use engine brakes except in case of emergencies. And those have been installed, I believe, two of them between eighty-eighth Avenue and ninety-sixth, and two of them between Telegraph Trail, sorry, Highway one and eighty-eighth Avenue. So I believe four signs in total have been installed along the corridor. So the township has received additional requests for signs that say no trucks, no truck symbol with with a tab that says accept local delivery. So there are some things that we have to consider in terms of these signs. Again, the South Coast British Columbia Transportation Authority Act includes a clause that basically says municipalities cannot take or authorize any action that would prohibit the movements of trucks on any part of the highway in their service region. And that legislation applies on any road regardless if it's an MRN road or not an MRN road. It doesn't matter. So basically, any road in the lower mainland except the provincial highway, this applies to. So what that means is that TransLink approval is required for signs that restrict truck movements. That's the communication we've been advising to residents and also the communication that we've been discussing with TransLink. So the Township Highway Traffic Bylaw also includes a couple of clauses that are specific to departing from a truck route. We don't actually define a local delivery. We define the conditions under which a truck can leave a truck route. And it primarily discusses the, using the nearest truck route, using the closest and most direct highway. As you can see in this clause, it's up for interpretation. It's not a hundred percent clear, and it's really up to the interpretation of the person who's enforcing the bylaw. So with that, there are some enforcement challenges that we have to consider with any signage that's installed. That could be either the engine brake signs or the trucks signage. The Township Bylaws Department does not have the ability to enforce moving vehicle violations. So that means that enforcement of either the engine brakes or trucks off a truck route has to fall to another organization or agency. The Commercial Safety Vehicle Safety Enforcement Branch, the CVSE, they regulate trucks on MOTI highways, and they also have an agreement with TransLink for MRN roads. However, the CVSE does not enforce on roads that are not the MRN or not MOTI. So the portion of two sixteen street between eighty-eighth Avenue and Highway N one, which is not an MRN road, would not be enforced by the CVSE. The RCMP are able to enforce moving vehicle violations regardless of their jurisdiction or road classification. However, they've told us the violations have to be observed and evidence-based, and it's subject to their resources and priorities. The other difficulty that there may be with a local delivery or a no truck local delivery sign is the enforcement could be challenging due to the interpretation of the bylaw and determining what a local delivery is. So whoever's enforcing the sign wouldn't be able to tell if that truck is a local delivery until they actually pull the truck over and checked where it was coming from and where it was going to and the route that it was taking. So that creates some enforcement challenges. So that more or less summarizes the the signage we've done, the the school zones and for the truck zones and the enforcement challenges. And I guess at this point, we'd like to open it up to any questions that there may be.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that presentation, Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, yes, thank you very much for the presentation there. I, if you've got a pen and paper, I just got a couple of really quick points, but you probably the answer be take a little, number one is that how well is the two sixteenth overpass performing right now? And I know it's early on, but I just wanted to get a bit of a kind of a Cole's Note version as how's that going? And number two, obviously, when you're working with the resident, the business community, trucking community, you're going to get a lot of questions asked and a lot of people agreeing or disagreeing on things. I know that council had asked for this presentation, so that's another thing you might want to comment on is is putting all the the parts together, the signage, the calls for service, the engine brakes, and also the education of letting the locals and others know. And the last thing, eleven thousand, eleven thousand eight hundred kilogram truck, what is that? And what kind of deliveries do they do? And those are my three points, if I may, through the chair.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, your worship. So the usage of the interchange, we did do a count using our intersection cameras late October, and we found that north of Highway one, it already has over eleven thousand vehicles per day using it. And south of Highway one, there's about ten thousand vehicles per day using it. We also found a corresponding reduction in volumes on two hundred streets, south of Highway one, about six to seven thousand vehicles per day in terms of a drop of traffic volume on two hundred street. And we found two eight street, a drop of about two thousand vehicles per day. So there has been a shift in traffic from other routes to two sixteen street. As people will typically use the shortest and most direct route. And the second question in terms of the communication that we had in the education, so the signage is the primary form of education to the operators of commercial vehicles. But there has been communication between the Ministry of TransLink and the BC Trucking Association in terms of advising them of what is a truck and what is, what is a truck route and what's not a truck route and the appropriate routes that should be using. So that education has been happening as well with the Trucking Association. In terms of the third question, which was what is a truck of eleven thousand eight hundred kilograms? If you bear with me, I have another slide here that I'm going to go to. So this is what is a heavy truck. This is the, what's used by the Federal Highway Administration, and it's also has a cutoff. You can see the the yellow, yellowish trucks there, which are like your two axle cube vans, your trucks like that. They are under eleven thousand eight hundred kilograms. So none of those would be considered a truck. So even a fairly decent sized cube van, if it's licensed for under eleven thousand eight hundred kilograms, would not be a truck. So the larger trucks, which are the two or three axle, probably longer box cube vans and semi trucks with something with an actual tractor trailer would be considered a truck for the purposes of the the bylaw and the eleven thousand eight hundred kilograms. I hope that that clarifies, and there's some photos there that show some typical trucks of each of those weight classes.
Yeah, thank you. Great, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the presentation. Helps to clarify some things along the way. I just had a question with regards to CVSE, the Commercial Vehicle Safety Enforcement Branch. And in there, you mentioned that they enforce moving violations, and how do they, how do they enforce that? Like, do they have? Do they drive around and watch and try and observe people taking the wrong roads or trucks driving on the wrong roads? Or how do they go about enforcing it? Bylaws doesn't do it. So you mentioned CVSE does do that. So how do they do that?
Most of the time that, sorry, thank you, your worship, most of the time the CVSE enforces it by actually having staging areas where they find a safe area to pull a truck over. It's not just a simple matter of stopping a truck anywhere you want on the roadway, as there may not be a safe place to actually do that. So they will try to find an area where a truck could be pulled over. And then they do have officers who are allowed and are trained to handle a moving violation and the appropriate vehicles and equipment to do so. So that's typically how they do their enforcement. And when I mentioned they do MOTI highways, it's because they are a provincial agency, but they also have an operating arrangement with TransLink for the MRN, where I believe TransLink has actually funded some additional resources for the, some enforcement of the MRN.
Okay, so I guess, yeah, that's helpful. I guess my question maybe more specifically was, do they, do they drive around in vehicles and patrol truck routes to see who's driving on them or not driving on them? Like, for example, our two sixteenth interchange, it's not a designated truck route coming off the freeway down to eighty-eight. So how, how, how is a, like, do they drive around and enforce it, or do they wait till they get a report? Like, I've never seen a CVSE car driving around, but maybe I just don't know what I'm looking for. That's, I guess, that's my question. How do they patrol it? And how do they find out when there's a truck on the wrong route?
Thank you, your worship. So I can't say exactly how they would deploy their various resources. They do have vehicles that can pull trucks over. So they have done that in some occasions, but they also have vehicles that, like I said, create a staging area. My understanding is that their focus has been more on the safety of commercial vehicles, and so most of the time when they're pulling vehicles over, it's more for a safety inspection to ensure that they meet those regulatory requirements. And so whether or not they would do enforcement on MRN and MOTI highways for trucks off a truck route, I can't say. Again, the section of two sixteen street between eighty-eighth Avenue and Highway one is not a truck route. It's not an MRN road, so the CVSE would actually have no responsibility for doing any enforcement on that section of road. So they would not enforce it at all because it's not a, it's not a truck route, it's not an MRN road, it's not under their mandate to enforce that section of two sixteen street. So then it would fall to the RCMP at that point.
It would be the RCMP. Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, if I can just add, back in the day, I was a CVSA inspector with the police, and the CVSA have their own unit, and they would, as Mr. Cordero said, primarily be looking for safety violations of trucks. So if you see a truck that is obviously not in compliance with the regulations and posing risks, they'll pull it over, and they will stage and work with the police on on safety checks, and you see them alongside the highway doing a safety check. The next time you're driving down some long highways, you see a little, they're pulled over, if a few trucks pulled over, and they'll pull the trucks over and do a safety check. So that's primarily what they do. They're not more, so moving violations and bylaw fractions, I don't see them. That's, that's a high priority in their role, but they work with the police and bylaws. So just to reinforce what Mr. Cordero said. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. And through you to Mr. Cordero, I just want to say thank you so much for today's presentation. I think it's very helpful for counsel, who's, as has been alluded to, received a lot of information from the public having to do with public engagement and the issues that I think you have very successfully addressed in terms of your PowerPoint presentation. So I'm hoping actually that the residents can receive a copy of this because they may not be available to have heard your presentation today through our processes. I did have a question. Do you have any idea or would somebody else know the anticipated timeline for the completion of phase two of the corridor study? Is my question.
Thank you, your worship. The goal was to have it completed in the spring or more likely the summer of next year. So the idea of phase two was to undertake traffic counts once the interchange had been constructed, traffic volumes had changed their patterns, and that the growth had stabilized. In a normal circumstance, I would say we could do those counts in the spring. However, given their current COVID situation and However, given their current COVID situation and people working from home and changes in travel patterns that have occurred, that is my only uncertainty in terms of of moving ahead with phase two. As it stands right now, our plan is to do the traffic counts in the spring and to try and do phase two of the study by the summer.
Thank you, and just one follow up thought. Since part of our process, it's not the township's responsibility, but it is a liaison role, the educative component to work with the trucking industry. I think it would be interesting to do a follow up to find out the degree to which the signage is actually influencing behavior. I think that that's one of the ways that we could find out, you know, the result of our efforts in that regard to make sure that it sort of correlates to me with our overall objectives to making it safer. Thank you.
Good. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Cordero. There are no further questions from council. I want to thank you for that presentation. It's great to see the update on what's been happening around the two sixteen corridor. It's certainly of interest to many people. And it's, it's encouraging to see all of the processes and programs that council has been actively pursuing to be put into action. So thank you very much. So now we'll move on to reports to council. And E one is updating procedures for forwarding non adhering residential uses applications to the agricultural land commission. And there's a motion there. I'm going to just refer to Mr. Back and just give us a real brief introduction to this, and then I'll ask for a motion.
Thank you, worship. A bit of an introduction, primarily as to the language. Mr. Seffy's worked along with staff on this for some time. And as you may recall, getting back to the two thousands, we've had a standing resolution of council that where an application in agricultural land reserve meets our zoning or meets other specified criteria, then it would be sent directly from the township to the agricultural land commission. There have been recent changes in the last year or so where they have modified the legislation. And the attempt here is to, I guess, use the same process, but reflect the new modern and specific language. And the key part of that is non adhering residential use applications. That's actually a land commission term. And that refers to situations where a property may be zoned for two dwellings. And under the land commission rules, this is really only entitled to one or perhaps one in a mobile or modular home. Or situations where the size of the building, this is relatively new, may exceed five thousand square feet. Again, our zoning bylaw provides, is permissive of those activities. And as such, it would be quite in order to have a resolution sending those onto the commission. Otherwise, we'd be passing resolutions that may be flying in the face of our zoning and underlying bylaws. Mr. Seffy, did you wish to elaborate or add something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Back. And the only thing I think should be added is that what Mr. Backen said was absolutely correct, just I guess a point of clarification. Everything that is compliant with our zoning bylaw, with the exception of those that require council's approval for subdivision, non foreign use. So those are not part of this, this process. This is simply to do with residential uses within an existing lot that meet our zoning bylaw. So it's to do with the recent modifications that Land Commission has made to the Agricultural Land Commission Act with respect to the size, for example, of a residential building not being used for agriculture, not exceeding five hundred square meters. It's to do with a second dwelling on a property. So in compliance with our zoning bylaw, except for non farm uses and subdivisions, which still would have to go through their own individual process.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Could I have, I remember council moved this. Counsel Whitmarsh moves it second or second. Counselor Long, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, oh, Counsel Arneson.
Thank you, worship. Through your worship, perhaps to Mr. Seffy, I did have a question regarding this. And in some ways, it seems like a housekeeping matter. But I did wonder if the application of this new language has any influence on council's current discretion, having to do with hardship or medical issues related to temporary mobile or manufactured homes on properties? Does that influence that in any way? And if so, with the uses that we have allowed, would they be grandfathered under the current guidelines? Thank you.
Mr. Seffy.
Thank you, worship. I guess, depending on how the word included is, is framed in terms of the question that Counsel Arneson posed, I will say this, that a standing resolution would ideally address, and I have to say this because we don't know whether the revised resolution, standing resolution, that staff is asking council to endorse and adopt is going to be satisfactory from the land commission's perspective or not. It's just a matter of trial and see where it goes. Having said that, it is our hope that it will address the situations where a second dwelling is needed for non farm uses based on our zoning bylaw. If it's a compassionate ground request, as long as it meets the wording of our bylaw, it doesn't need to be brought forward to council. If however, there is a nuance or a certain circumstance that doesn't quite meet the language, then it would be referred to council anything. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Yeah.
Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, just if I may, through the chair to staff, I was wondering about, you know, this non adhering residential uses. Rather, is this more of a housekeeping or just rather than us getting caught up in all these matters that refer to the land commission? Would that also include like people running businesses or trucking or parking or all the other things? That's one of my first questions if I may through the chair.
Your worship, the, the language, I guess, housekeeping, I apologize if it's, if it's throwing counselors off, is really intended to demonstrate that this is not substantively changing anything in terms of our, our current procedures, our current views, our current plans and bylaws as to how these matters are dealt with. It is really another way of dealing with the new regulations. It doesn't mean that now we're no longer accepting applications for certain types of uses or referring them to another process. We're really proceeding as if nothing has happened, just adjusting our own internal language for a standing resolution to suit what we believe to be the intent of the land commission with respect to the use of, as Mr. Backen referenced, the specific use of the term non adhering residential use. So that's why we've called it not a housekeeping item. It's not substantive.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Now, and the latter is, this doesn't change matters regarding our rural plan decision, if I may?
No, your worship, it doesn't.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. See no further questions or discussions. I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Whitmarsh, or sorry, Counsel Woodward opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. And move on to bylaws for first and second reading. This is resoning application number one zero zero four nine three and development permit application number one zero zero nine one one. A P N A group, bylaw five, six, four, seven. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, second. Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion. See Counsel Arneson.
Thank you again, your worship. I did have a question through you to staff regarding one of the elements that I'm really supportive of. And I just require further clarification. So the report talks about the ecological buffer and the wildlife patch. So I'm wondering, because I can't discern from the diagram, there's a diagram on page nineteen. There's a few of them, but I'll just refer to that one. So is it the actual intention to allow access by the residents to this property? Or is it more that there'll be fencing of some type to create it as more of a eco zone? I'm just trying to differentiate in my mind what the actual usage of that would be because I know that it is set aside particularly as a wildlife refuge in particular.
Mr. Seffy.
Yes, your worship, there are, there are fences proposed, your worship, because as Counsel Arneson referenced, it is an eco buffer. So it is not intended to provide recreational opportunities.
Okay, thank you very much. That's good to know. I have a different question. On page forty nine of the staff report, the architect refers to a step downtown home in the complex having a basement of some type, and I found this to be somewhat unusual. So if staff could please give some feedback, is this just because of the, the land, the configuration, the lay of the land that a basement is achievable there?
Your worship, this is not a basement in the traditional sense of the word in that it is not a, to be used as a suite, a self contained suite, because that is not permitted in a, in a townhouse complex development proposal. So it's really a way for the architect to address what is, I guess, a bit of a transition from existing two story buildings form to a three story form within the actual body or within the internal to the development of the townhouse. So it is internal to the, the townhouse itself.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ensure whether or not it was subterranean in any way, if it was actually underground. But you're saying it's actually like a ground floor suite. They're just calling it a basement.
Well, it is actually partly in the ground. It is not, it is not above ground. That is how they were able to accomplish the total floor area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It is not going to be self contained.
Yeah, thank you. I understand. Thank you.
Counsel Ferguson. You're muted. You're muted, Counsel Ferguson. Might be your headset again, settings.
No, he's actually muted. I can see the mute.
Yeah, I'm actually muted. I want to let you know, I got some technical problems. Are we're still on the A P N A group?
Yes.
Application, okay. Okay, that was all. I just want to let you know that I somehow along left the meeting, I think.
All right, thank you. See no further discussion. I'll call a question. All those in favor, F one? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Move on to F two. This is official community plan amendment and resoning application number one zero zero one nine three and development permit application number one zero one one five four Christian Life Assembly, bylaw five, six, seven, three, bylaw five, six, seven, four, and bylaw five, six, seven, five. I have a motion.
So move Ferguson.
And second, second by Counsel Ferguson. Questions, discussion, see none? I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. We want to F three. It's the hospital parking requirement, bylaw number five, six, four, six. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, second by Counsel Woodward, and discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And any opposed?
No, no, I'm, I'm asking.
Oh, I didn't see. There's just, okay, ask your question.
I've got to move so many gadgets to raise.
Yeah, I know. It's a bit of a delay there.
Well, okay, so just to be clear then, this is, this is adjusting the floor, the square footage ratio to the parking. So it's going to be more in line with it. I was just kind of curious, are they going to reduce the amount of parking that they have currently to fit this new ratio? And do we have the numbers handy? I'm sure I tried to find the report, though, how many parking spaces they used to have before the expansion and how many they're going to have following the expansion.
Mr. Seffy, if you can help out with that.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, it will reduce the requirement for a hospital use, the zoning bylaw amendment, if it was to be approved by council. It will amend it by reducing the parking requirements from one stall per twenty eight square meter of floor area, total floor area to one for every forty one square meter of total floor area. So essentially, it will reduce it by approximately forty percent or so.
Okay.
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 I have a subsequent question. So that, so that means, but the question I asked, though, parking has been there for many, many years. Is any of that being removed? Or are they just not required to expand with this new ratio renewed here?
Your worship, there has, I guess, in recent years, council has approved variances to our parking requirements. So the hospital is currently not providing a surplus. They still are somewhat deficient. There's still a limited of a deficiency if you were to use the existing bylaw or the proposed bylaw. It's just a matter of the degree of variance that they would be seeking with the next phase of development.
So even with this amendment, this, they'll still be deficient?
That is correct.
And one other question that may not be related, but I mean, in terms of charging for parking, I guess the province has waived that during COVID, but we don't have any control of whether they do or don't, although we do give a tax exemption for the parking area. Is that correct?
I'm not sure about the tax exemption. I know Ms. Ralph is on the line. Maybe she has information that she can share for Mr. Backen?
Well.
I believe it's a tax exemption to the parking portion to the foundation. And the hospital, what the hospital's parking is, is Fraser Health. And we may be a stretch.
I would, I don't want to delay the vote. And he weren't, you know, essential presence to me supporting it. So, but thank you for the information.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on this one, F or G one, I need to declare conflict interest, please.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now look for a motion for G one by law for first, second, and third reading. And that's a soil bylaw amendment filling an area subject to flooding, bylaw number five, six, three, nine. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson in a second. Counsel Kuntz, discussion. Call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. If you can ask, Counsel Woodward back in. Okay, we're back. And now we go to bylaws for consideration at third reading. H one is resoning application number one zero zero six, one, six, and development permit application number one zero one, one, three, three. It is Polyco Holdings Limited, bylaw number five, six, five, zero. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move that, your worship.
Counsel Long, second by Counsel Whitmarsh, questions, discussion. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, thanks. I had a couple of questions about this one, maybe to start this off. More specifically, to just trying to clarify exactly what's going on here. So there's already an existing approval on this site, Mr. Mayor. Is that correct? This is an existing approval. Would that be fair?
Mr. Seffy.
Your worship, I'm not sure what Counsel Woodward is, is asking if there's an approval in place.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm kind of just doing some question and answers here. If we, if we're amending a comprehensive development zone, then they have a, an approved comprehensive development zone for an existing development. So we're, we're modifying the existing one to give them more floor area. Would that, would that be correct?
So your worship, the applicant has requested to make modifications to what was approved previously, which I believe was in two thousand. Background and history section. Sorry, I don't have the date here, but recently it was rezoned, as Counsel Woodward has referenced. And now the applicant is asking for is amending the, the previously approved zone to allow for more floor area for the commercial as well as the heights. A change in the height of the building, a proposed building.
Right. And so the, the other question I had, so that approval was granted prior to the adoption of a community amenity contribution policy? Would that be correct?
That's what the recollection, my recollection is, your worship, yes.
Okay, so that's, that would explain why I think it was noted.
Twenty eleven, sorry to interrupt, Counsel Woodward. Yeah, the previous zoning was approved in twenty eleven.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, so that was that's quite a while ago. Okay, so that's that's good to get that clarified for council. I may have some referral motions and some amendments here to potentially propose, but I had a couple of other questions. So if we're, I want to make sure I'm understanding it, you know, one hundred percent correctly, that that we're looking at an additional commercial floor area of approximately twenty one thousand square feet. And then to accommodate that, you know, you need to, of course, increase the height of the building, even if we're not legally increasing density. Would that be fair?
Mr. Seffy.
That's correct, your worship. It's it's not a density of residential use, but arguably it's an increase of a commercial floor area. So that would constitute a commercial increase, I guess, of of density.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm not going to, I think we we some of us know the history of the definition of density and commercial floor area. I'm not going to belabor that. I am specifically, though, talking about if we're if we're increasing the height, we're potentially increasing the value of the residential. And then from what I understand from the drawings, even though the proposed, it's referenced as a proposed library in the staff report. It doesn't seem very proposed when you look at the proponent submissions of CRU, I think it was D, I can't remember, I can't remember the exact CRU name. CRUD, that's correct, labeled library. So if that's a twelve thousand five hundred square foot library, we're increasing the commercial floor area by twenty one thousand square feet. Is it fair to say that this amendment's required to put the library on the second floor? Is that fair to say?
Is it a question for staff, your worship?
Yes, it is a question for staff.
Mr. Seffy.
Yeah, your worship, it is referenced in the in the staff report, the discussion about the library, but certainly that is not a definitive use. So whether it's actually triggered by the library or not, whether the application and the request for additional commercial area is triggered by that or not, I'm not aware of at this point. I can confer with staff. But really, it is possible that it may end up not being a library use. I want that to be clear. This is just something that has been discussed and has been negotiated, but it's certainly not been not been confirmed as part of a legal arrangement.
Okay, so I think we're getting down to it here because, I mean, I technically would agree with that. I mean, that's technically correct. As far as I know, you know, the the library is not approved, but we have here on these drawings, it does, it says community library, and the whole building seems to be being changed to accommodate this library. So here we are, essentially, you know, increasing the size of the building for a library. I'm not sure we would necessarily want to do that without a community amenity contribution if it doesn't turn out to be a library. So I think that that's one concern that I've got, that we're we're increasing the height of the building from four to six stories. I think increasing the value of the residential pretty significantly. And then we're adding twenty one thousand square feet of commercial space that may or may not become a library. So I had a couple of other questions in regards to this library, because when you look at the proponent submissions, it doesn't seem very proposed. It seems pretty specifically being redesigned for this library. And I have some concerns about that, that we're essentially committing to to head down a path of building a twelve thousand five hundred square foot library at significant cost versus, you know, during a very challenging time. So I had a couple of other questions maybe for Mr. Becken. Mr. Becken, is it is it possible that this library will be rented from this developer, or would it be strata ownership offered to the township of Lanley?
Your worship, at the present time, I think discussions are focusing on on our rental. But as as council's aware, once we actually have some sort of parameters or or agreement in principle, we have to return to council with that information and determine, I guess, what the fate of our our potential uses are.
So what would be like with the idea this, like, so if it's twelve thousand five hundred square feet, you know, rented, I'm assuming something like twenty to twenty five dollars per foot, would that be fair? That we would be looking at a potential rental of this of around four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars per year? Would that be fair?
I think that's in the right range, although I think the per square footage cost might at the end of the day with triple net charges and whatnot be higher. So I would say that might serve as the more of the floor than the ceiling for what the the cost could be.
Okay, so then, so then we get this, so I'm going to circle back to the beginning, just to get a question, maybe from Mr. Becken, Mr. Mayor, if you'll indulge me a bit longer here. So what I'm sensing here then is we're amending a comprehensive development zone to increase the height of the building for a developer, which is fine, I mean, in principle, it's fine, to get more twenty one thousand square feet of additional space with no community amenity contribution for the privilege of then renting it back to us for four hundred and thirty five or five hundred thousand dollars per year for a library on the second floor of the building, not not even on the ground floor. You would have to go upstairs to get into this this rather large library. So I I have some pretty significant concerns about approving this and heading down the path of of essentially, you know, five hundred thousand per year to try to have the privilege of renting space that we're essentially creating millions of dollars of value yet again for another developer, not receiving a community amenity contribution, I think, is 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 a true partnership of development in the township of Lanley. So I don't know if you want to hear from others, Mr. Mayor, but I do have a couple of amendments and referrals to propose to council in this regard, if you're willing to consider them.
Yeah, you are, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Okay, so I would like to to make a referral back to staff to discuss with the proponent a community amenity contribution specific to the increased height for residential value and additional commercial floor area for a potential library use. Let's all move.
I'll second for a discussion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Discussion on that, Counsel Woodward, you you moved it. Did you wish to speak further?
I wish to speak a little bit, so thank.
Go ahead.
So I think what I'm what I'm getting at here is, you know, this is a pretty significant benefit. And and I don't see much of a partnership here. What I what I see is a pretty good deal, pretty one-sided deal for the property owner at the township of Lanley's expansion. So I would like to see a more fair deal, a better deal, commensurate with the value that we're creating and potentially locating a pretty substantial library use in this building. So I would like to to see a more in-depth discussion occurring around this, not rushing to, you know, create some political deliverable that we can all cheer. I would like to see a really good, fair deal for the township of Lanley taxpayer, which on the surface, this doesn't seem to be. Thank you.
Counsel Arneson.
Uh, thank you, worship. I don't know how to interject in this way. However, I was not anticipating that this agenda item would suddenly become more or less about the library. I understand the rationale for a referral, but I think I need to recuse myself from this conversation as the F R L library representative. I think that would be fair. So I'm going to do that because I I don't want to in any way, you know, massage this one way or another. I I but I I'm going to do so now under the circumstances in hindsight, now that this has come up. Thank you.
That's fair. Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Long.
Yeah, well, I don't I don't think that is fair. How can how can this this result, this report be turned into a discussion of the library? I think that's that's very inappropriate that the council has done that. I guess he's managed to do that and and I just don't see that as appropriate at all. Now, let's get to the point, which I don't quite see, quite frankly. But where it says in the report about amenity, community amenity charges, it says specifically on page seventeen of my report that there is no increase in residential units. So there would not be any CACs applicable. So perhaps staff can explain that paragraph that is in that in the report that says that's the case. And how come all of a sudden libraries potential libraries or potential meeting places or potential commercial floor space now is subject to CACs?
Mr. Seffy.
Uh, thank you, your worship. What staff has to follow, your worship, is is council adopted policies and past practices in the absence of a specific policy that might be with a specific situation. Our CAC policy references increase in residential units. In fact, there aren't any figures, if you will, any rates, any any target contribution amounts attributable to to non-residential uses. And with that in mind, that is the context of of the negotiations that have gone on with this particular opponent for this particular application. And as council will note in the community amenity contribution section of the report, there is reference to the fact that, given the past practice and the the policy language, there has not been a community contribution, community amenity contribution offered or asked for by staff with this particular application.
So just to be clear then, why would we ask for one if there is no increase in residential units? Isn't the CAC to provide amenities for the community? And if there aren't people living in the units, then why would they have to contribute for rental space, for example? Or or?
Yeah, I think that's what Mr. Seffy does outlined. Our practice of CACs for residential units, and there is no increase in this.
Okay, well, then, you know, I mean, we're fairly often moving goalposts all around to the point where I don't even know where the where the field ends or begins. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Uh, yes, just a a question through to staff from your worship, the originally, when I'm reading this document, I just need clarification. I see that it's talking about a sick, moving to a six-story building from a originally proposed four-story. And I see that they're adding one, my understanding is they're adding one floor of commercial. So I'm not sure, I don't understand how we get from four to six, because it's adding two floors. So is it going to be three floors of commercial, or is it just going to be two floors of commercial plus four residential? If that's the case, then it seems like there is an extra floor of residential. I'm just a little confused on what what we're actually adding here, going from four to six stories.
Your worship, I don't know if it's accurate to say that there was only once one level of commercial and now there's two levels of commercial. It may be, but I'm not sure. I cannot, I guess, verify that. The the reference is to the total overall height of a building. Whereas previously, we have been four, what the applicant is now asking for is six stories. The current proposal is four stories of residential above two stories of of commercial. So that is the current current proposal.
So, okay, so was the original proposal to have four stories of residential on top of one story commercial?
Uh, the original proposal was not a site specific in that there was no DP application. It was a rezoning that would have limited the use and and the density. And that would have included the the height provision that would have been limited to four stories.
Okay, so what we're saying here is this is the 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 density, the residential density is staying the same in this building from what the original would have been if they had had put a plan together. It's staying the same, and we're just adding two floors of commercial. That's what's being proposed.
That's correct, your worship. There is actually a table that provides that information for council's information. And the hard copy is page fourteen of H one in terms of the permitted uses and provisions within the CD eighty nine E zone that was approved in twenty eleven and what the current proposal is. And as Counsel Whitmarsh just referenced, there is no amendment required as far as the residential component is concerned, because the current proposal is within the range of permitted uses, permitted density of residential, which was forty to eighty units per acre. That's still within that range. It is forty two units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
Good, Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you. I also wanted, I might as well get in there early. I know there's a lot of discussion in, but it appears like there's some confusion and I it doesn't hurt to to have this looked at again, but I wanted to know this, my little concern I wanted, I've had before is the change of density and working with the staff regarding that. Regarding, and if I may, through the staff to either Mr. Becken or Mr. Seffy, we've had challenges with other developers come forward and wanted extra density and extra floor space and a few other things. And it's been rest both residential and commercial. I don't know if it's come up with industrial yet. If I may, through the chair, in negotiating CACs or amenities on these extra densities, is that, does that apply to this development as well, if I may?
Mr. Seffy.
Thank you, worship. I was just pausing to see if Mr. Becken wanted to provide any comments. At the risk of, I guess, repeating what I said earlier, worship, we have as far as our guidelines and our direction as as staff is concerned, we have council adopted plans, bylaws, and policies. And then beyond that, past practice. So as an example, the adequacy of of contributions for certain type of applications is really a question of what council has directed staff in the past. So we follow past examples in terms of what might be acceptable. When somebody comes forward with an application that might be pushing the envelope, if you will, in terms of the parameters of a community plan. If, in fact, we don't have a specific guideline or a specific policy adopted by council, we then refer back to past practice in terms of what has council approved to be appropriate in terms of a community amenity contribution. It would certainly help if we had something in terms of a defined policy, but but in the absence of that, we take each decision of council as as providing us with some direction.
Yeah, and I think I might bring something in in the future, and I either notice a motion or something. I think the staff, would it not be would it not be the case, the staff needs a little bit of help when folks come forward and want some extra density and everything? And that applies to this application as well, if I may, Mr. Seffy?
It certainly could, yes.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. As I say, it is a concern, has been a concern of mine for the another application in the past. It had changes in density in the staff, and I talked to senior staff at length, had some concerns of what to do, because not a clear direction from council. Thank you.
Yep, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna just to, you know, try to be helpful here. I just had one more question to staff through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Do we have unfettered discretion to approve or deny this this zoning amendment application for any reason whatsoever?
Mr. Seffy, I think it might be for land use, Mr. Seffy.
Yes, absolutely, your worship. The best interest of the public. Council has absolute and unfettered discretion.
Okay, so it's good to get that clarified. Thank you, Mr. Seffy. So I I would just like to sort of summarize again the intent here. The intent here, I think, is we have a pretty unique situation that's not covered by policy. I think a very unique situation. In fact, we are considering the approval of a of a zoning amendment to create additional floor area, a commercial floor area, twenty thousand square feet roughly. So then we have the privilege then of renting this back from this development corporation for some, you know, untold number of years, creating millions of dollars in additional value over the additional, the existing previous approval. So again, a very unique situation, given that we're looking at this as a library, a significant cost, a significant annual rental cost. You know, that could go towards purchasing land and and having ownership for the taxpayer rather than ending up as a tenant. So this seems like a pretty one-sided, or at least heading in the direction of being a pretty one-sided deal, a pretty bad deal for the township of Lanley taxpayer. And I think with this referral motion, I'm attempting to get a fairer, better deal for the township of Lanley taxpayer, given the millions of dollars in value that are being created for this for this group. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Long.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a good or a bad deal here, because it's it's so muddled up at the moment. But, you know, we don't even have the details of this potential library. Do we know what the, you know, you mentioned the rates, what some numbers are that I had early on in the in the conversation, but I would imagine that staff are making the very best deal. And that's what our intention is always, as a council and as a staff, is to make the best deal for the for the for the taxpayer. So I, you know, this this sort of really muddles things up, in my opinion, because we don't have those details and we don't even sure know what kind of the library may or may not go there. So I think we have rules in place that people follow. And if you want to change the rules, there's time to do it. It seems that there seems to be a habit of this council to pop them in at the last minute. And quite frankly, the public should be coming in at first and second. Why would you give first and second reading to?
Just just keep your comments to that.
Well, it is. That's a very legitimate comment. Here we are at third reading. We've had a public hearing. Nobody. Well, it is, that's a very legitimate comment, here we are at third reading, we've had a public hearing, nobody from the public came forward with this, the with the concern. Because we went through the process, we have our comments. Now we're at the verge of third reading and all of a sudden, there's a whole pile of things, these these things should be discussed in more detail before we give first and second, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, I'll see any further discussion, uh, my comments are, I'm looking at the density on that chart of um forty to eighty U P As being allowed and. This one is in at forty-two, so I don't see a huge increase in density o- other than what's uh approved by council and. As Counsel ordered, mentioned, we do know the difference between commercial and residential density, we learned that one. So I I certainly hear the concerns, but I I I'm not going to support this, but, because you know, I would. There's more residential density, uh, more amenities, uh, money for amenities for the people living there, I think be appropriate. But having a good mixed-use um building like this, and the library is a future discussion, whether whether or not it's there, so I am uh. Going to um just not support the amendment and support the motion. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I I am, I think this is a a challenging one, because I certainly see the. The value that's uh may it being added uh to to a building. Um, I also know that we're gonna need a library at some point, I don't know if this is the right place or not, and I think the getting the library conversation there is is. Does muddle the waters a little bit. Um, you know, I feel like the the C A C uh policy is really around building, is around creating uh benefit for those people who live in the area. And this isn't increasing that at all, in fact, it's on the low end, so. I I don't think we're seeing an increased uh um need for for uh the benefit to the community that we would normally if we increase density. That's what it's for, and we don't have increased number of people moving there, and I don't think this is the right. Mechanism for trying to get more money out of developers, I think we should, we have our policies, uh, we, they they pay a lot of fees to us already. We will need a library somewhere, whether we build our own or whether we rent, that's another discussion, I think it's meddling the waters, and so. Uh, for that reason, um, I'm gonna stick with the policy that we have on this and and I won't vote for the amendment.
I don't see any further discussion, so I'll call the question on the amendment, all those in favor? And opposed? So Counsel Whitmarsh, mayor froze, Counsel Long, Counsel Kunst opposed. So we're back to the main motion, I'm gonna ask the clerk, should we invite Counsel Anderson back in? Or still to do with this, I guess that, yeah, it might muddies it up, right, we'll leave it the way it is.
I have a couple more motions on the.
Yeah, I know, I I I see it, yeah, I'm just checking with the clerk, um. Counsel Ferguson on the on the main motion.
On the main motion, I'm, I think we'll move, I mean, I my only concern, and I hope I express it good enough, is that sometimes when, maybe not so much this time, but. It does apply this time when, certainly a time before a couple meetings ago, when folks do come forward with changes to. Uh, increased density, either residential or uh commercial, or. I I just say, I can't speak that much with industrial or manufacturing, but the thing is, it is a challenge for staff, and we do have a a policy. But we need a a higher level policy or a better policy for staff to be able to make decisions for uh. I'm looking at fees, I'm checking at charges, I'm looking at D C Cs and C A Cs, because they're kind of stuck, because we have a normal for our. Official community plan to neighborhood plan, but we don't have necessarily the tools in place for when people want to make changes, especially density changes. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Woodward.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, yeah, so I'm gonna, you know, I take some of these comments on the the previous debate of the referral motion into heart, I think, well, I do have another one though. So we'll move on from uh the millions in value that have been created here. Uh, to the next one, which, you know, I think I've spent some time with the drawings here over the weekend, and you know, I got some. Pretty significant concerns that we are heading down the path of approving this library, I mean, I, you know, I I if I bring things up at first and second. Um, you know, that's not the right time to do it, I bring it up at third reading, that's not the right time to do it, apparently, it's never the right time to change anything. Um, but I do have a referral here, at which I will then speak to it. Um, I refer back to staff for the proposed library to be located on the ground level of a smaller, more affordable size, I saw move.
Thank you, is there a second there?
Oh, second for discussion.
I'd like to speak to that, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Can that be repeated, and how does that relate to the bylaw? We're now planning the library again in this bylaw?
Okay, if it's certainly, I just just hold on, could could the motion be uh repeated?
Yep, so it's related to the second floor uh that we're creating here, uh, that shows proposed library. So I'd like to refer back to staff for the proposed library to be located on the ground level of a smaller, more affordable size.
Okay, uh, I'll fair enough, I'll I'll leave that stand for referral.
Thank you, I'd like to speak to that.
Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
I'll speak very briefly here, uh, so to me, you know, I've spent some time with this, and and I know this came up in one of our open workshops. Uh, the library item's been on the table for a while. Um, you know, I I've been sitting with this and and I really, to me, I I think a library's gotta be on the ground floor, I I think it's kind of goofy. You know, and I use that word deliberately, kind of goofy to put it on the second floor, you know, up an escalator or an elevator. I think we need to have this on the ground level to be more accessible, if we're heading down this road of of, you know, where this is going, I I'd like to try to improve it. And and see it on the ground floor and and I and I have a smaller, more affordable size, uh. You know, and so that's, I'm not trying to dictate on the fly what that size is, I think staff and other members can have that conversation. Maybe come back with some more information of, you know, why does it need to be twelve thousand five hundred square feet? Why does it need to be on the second floor? Uh, you know, what are the benefits to that, when I see some pretty obvious benefits to making it slightly smaller, more affordable. Uh, you know, on the ground level, uh, where it would be more prominent, and I think right at the sidewalk and and have a higher utility, so. I would like to uh hopefully send that back to see uh where we're headed with this, because I don't, I don't want to really just, you know, grant approval to third reading with. You know, a big library on the second floor, uh, with, you know, this is seems to be my last chance to try to change that, so I'd like to try to change that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counsel Long.
Yeah, I I I still don't believe this is the time to be doing that, I don't know what size the library should be ideally, but certainly the. Counsel is saying that he's not dictating what size it should be, but it must be smaller. Uh, whether it should be on the second or first floor, I don't know, I think the second floor could be wonderful, you have some real nice vistas perhaps out of there. But you know, here, I'm being pulled into discussing the whole uh plan of this library, which uh it is not involved, I don't think, in this rezoning. It you can take the word, maybe the motion should be to strike the word library out of the plans, because I guess it could be whatever. Um, so I don't think this is the right time, but it certainly will be the right time when we get down to discussing. The community amenity of a library, which is going to be required in Willoughby. And I'm excited that uh that we're gonna build something that's gonna be fabulous there, and whether it's needs to be larger or smaller than it's being proposed, or even being suggested. Uh, we don't have that knowledge at the moment, so this is not the time, in my opinion, to be discussing this.
Uh, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure when the right time to discuss it is or not either, but I. I do have, um, you know, I I I'd be fine to myself to turn this back. Uh, for staff, but I'm not sure I'd be quite as prescriptive as Counsel Woodward suggesting, I I just think maybe. Uh, some um further discussion around this use as a library, the size of it, maybe it should be on the second floor and the size it is, I don't actually know. And I know that isn't the point of this this particular uh bylaw that we're looking at today, and so I do have a bit of challenge with that, because it's kind of mixed in here, and yet it's not really. A part of the discussion, but I also maybe, you know, as they build it and create this building, if that's the intention, we should maybe deal with that prior to it, so. I'd be happy to refer this back without the specific restrictions of having to be on the first floor and having to be smaller, but just refer it back to staff for rationale as to. Some of the conversations that have happened around this library space and why it is where it is and why the size and so on.
Thank you. Uh, I see Counsel Woodward, is that still up?
Yeah, no, it's the second time to speak here, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yeah, it's your second time, so I was wondering if you still, if you had to take it down, go ahead.
So thank you, yeah, so I I, you know, I would certainly be open to to sending it back, you know, in a form to get some rationale, if this is. You know, if if we're still open to it being on the second floor, I I mean, I'm happy to see it come back with some, any additional information I can get, because. You know, I think that uh we're saying we don't know, you know, with the what the library and it's not approved, well, somebody seems to know, because there's a pretty significant set of drawings that. You know, somebody, not me, seems to know uh why it's twelve thousand five hundred square feet, not a different size, why it's on the second floor, it's it's pretty firmly proposed. I don't know what other time I'm gonna bring this up, because if this is approved, good luck changing it after the fact, it'll be an approved by law. Why didn't you bring it up at third, Counsel Woodward? So you know, that, you know, I have to bring it up now, of course, I'm criticized for bringing it up now. I mean, I I think in the end, we we need some more information before we head down this road of creating millions of dollars in value. I feel like if I, you know, I want to support a mixed-use building in Willoughby. Um, you know, and and if the if all these referrals are voted down, I'm still gonna support it, so, because I still want that that mixed-use building in Willoughby, so. I'm really, you know, really concerned, this this is my last chance to try to impact uh the location and size of that library, thank you.
Uh, Counsel Long.
Your worship, this is not the time to discuss the plans for the library, we can put the library wherever we need to, at whatever time. So I would like to get an opinion, I we probably should have legal counsel in the chambers, because. How can we really be discussing the potential leasing of a space and a potential development? When we're not really uh at that point, uh, you know, this is not the place to have it, so can we get a comment, do you think, from Mr. Backen or somebody, like?
I, well, I certainly it's just speculation, because it's it's certainly appropriate in this uh setting, because it does mention proposed or or proposed library, so. Whether or not it's it it's township and and those negotiations are definitely um would have to happen, they haven't happened, so. Uh, you know, uh, it is appropriate to speak about, to speak to the proposal, because it's uh, it says that on the diagram or in the report. But it isn't a done deal by any stretch of the mean.
Well, your worship, I'd like to hear an opinion, I've seen plenty of 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 uh plans that come forward that say coffee shop, or they say. Uh, supermarket, you know, I mean, usually you just put stuff in the drawings to say these are potential uses, but they don't necessarily, it's not contractual.
Yeah, I did give my comments to Mr. Backen, are those words fair to say?
We're going down a road that we can be sued by, that's that's my concern.
Uh, your worship, I think, I think there's two streams going on, uh, one, I think, is the discussion about the future library and location size and whatnot. And you're and you're quite correct, uh, ultimately, the final determination of that will be down the road. At some point, as we examine the need, viability, cost and location for a potential library. That's the first part, the second part, though, is the discussion, it's not really a legal one, it's really to the chair. And his purview, if there's a degree of relevance between the items being discussed and the application itself, as I understand it. You have noted that the applicant's submission has made reference to the potential future library. Where there is no binding or or complete agreement, uh, and that therefore is relevant to this discussion, so it's so far, the the discussion seems to be. Consistent with the rights of the chair to determine the relevancy of the discussion and the overall direction, given the submission and the materials put before council.
Yeah, well, thanks for that, your worship, but um, so and I and I respect your decision as chair to allow this conversation to happen, but the. Mr. Backen has clearly said in the first part that this is not the place to discuss the details of the library, there is an opportunity for that down the road, so councils have plenty of time. To think more about that, and boy, it'll make the discussion so much better, but I don't believe it it relates, and I don't think it's appropriate as part of this discussion, in my opinion, thank you.
And, um, you know, just my comments on this uh on this proposal too, and on this referral, I I I. Again, go back to my comments on the other amendment in that, uh. You know, by uh shrinking this the size, I think we're going back to making it smaller, smaller footprint uh in this, or smaller space for commercial in this building and. And I'm comfortable with what's being proposed, I can support that, and the library decision, that's for the future, so I'm I'm won't be supporting the referral. Uh, Consecoost.
Yeah, so can I, I just want to clarify that, um. If we don't have this library discussion now, we are still going to be able to discuss whether this. Um, building gets a library or where we want to have the library, is that?
That's, that's correct, Mr. Backen, that's correct, yeah.
That that's correct, your worship, the best way to consider this is the uh form and character of the building itself, and of course, the use and density. You're seeing a increased commercial floor plate and effectively a a maintaining the residential uh density. But by elevating it somewhat to allow for this uh increased commercial floor plate that could have many potential uses, and as was noted. It may be a library, but it may be something else, because there's no contractual commitment to make it a library, the reference on the drawings, uh, perhaps, uh. Is well-intentioned, but it does uh, it does lead the reader to uh to a conclusion that may be a bit premature.
Okay, so just to to clarify for me, um, should, I'm happy to have a library discussion. In the future, I don't necessarily am promoting to have the library in this building, so just wanted to clarify that, so I I won't be supporting the amendment. Um, but I do want to have that library discussion.
Thank you. Right, I'll, okay, Counsel. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I am, you know, I I certainly, be before we vote, of course, I want to hear the, what the referral motion actually is. Um, as well, but also, I'm, you know, for me. It it I I find it very confusing that it does show that there's a library here, and that may, maybe that was just to give us an example of what could possibly go in there, but I am concerned. That they may be designing, and they may design the building as such to accommodate that, and if there wasn't going to be a library down the road. Maybe they would do something quite different with the building, I don't actually know, and there's no information in the package that outlines. What that would be like with or without this uh potential library, so while I appreciate we're not discussing the library today. It does, I agree with Counsel Woodward, it does make it very clear in here that their intention is to have a library, and we haven't decided that at all. So I I think, I I don't know if there's a rush or not, I'm just not sure why this wouldn't be helpful to go back to staff. Come back with some information to us about the conversations that have happened about this, and maybe see drawings and what they look like with or without a library, and maybe this is it. Maybe it's not, but we don't really know, so once I hear the referral motion, to hear what it actually says, and if it's a bit more general. Um, then I would be willing to support it.
Thank you, oh, okay, I'm gonna call the question, Ms. Barra, can you read out the referral motion, please?
The referral motion is to refer back to staff to discuss the proposed library to be now to be located on the ground level. With a smaller, more affordable size.
All right, I'll call the question on the referral, all those in favor, oh, we've got a hand up.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Well, this is, I want, I'd like to amend the motion to refer back to staff for more information about the proposed library and that location. Rather than mandating that it has to be smaller, it has to be on the.
So we we deal with this one first, that's basically, and then if it fails, you can put another amendment on, if you wish. All right, I'll call the question, all those in favor, the referral. Opposed? Counsel Whitmarsh, long, froze, Kunst are opposed, referral fails.
Mr. Mayor.
Back to the main motion.
Make another one, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you, so uh, this one here, I might uh might want to remind again that. From what I heard, and maybe I heard it incorrectly, I heard Mr. Backen state that we're headed in the direction of a proposed library uh being rented. Uh, not provided by a a strata ownership opportunity, so I did want to make an amendment, this is not a referral. An amendment uh to the approval uh for third reading, that any proposed library, I'll go slowly, that any proposed library. Be provided to the township of Langley via strata lot ownership, not as a rental unit. With all value accruing to the development corporation, so move.
I'll second for discussion.
Counsel Ferguson seconded, okay.
I can repeat that, Mr. Mayor, if that would be helpful to the clerk.
I'll I'll ask the clerk if she got it all. She's just writing it down, so just a second. While she's doing that, do you wish to speak to it?
Uh, yes, I do, so I think that, you know, what I referenced in uh commenting on the main motion for some of these uh, some of these attempts. Was that uh the concern being that that, you know, I think some of the trend here the last couple of years, again, as a new counselor. Um, you know, I I never know when it is the right time to discuss these things, I mean, we're gonna have a library discussion after we grant third reading. To an amendment, an amendment that shows library of very specific sizes, access configurations, parking layouts. Uh, somehow, I think, you know, I think we all know that 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 conversation is gonna be a little bit different uh before an approval than after approval, so. You know, I'd like to, I don't know when it's appropriate, it never seems to be the right time to change anything, as I said. Uh, but here, heading down this road of uh what Mr. Backen outlined is uh is a rental situation. That makes it, in my opinion, a combination of amending it to increase uh the floor area by twenty thousand square feet and then. Renting it back, uh, we end up creating millions of dollars in value, I find this a very one-sided deal, now, I think it can change to. A more fair deal if it's an ownership situation uh on the taxpayer. Uh, not a rental situation for density that we're allowing them to create through amendment, so. Are amending the original approval for twenty thousand more square feet that we then rent, okay, that's the third time I said, I won't belabor this any further, so. I think that if you're gonna head down the road of considering a library, that should be in the form of a strata lot ownership by the taxpayer. Uh, not a rental situation, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that clarification on that. Motion, I want to check with the clerk, I believe this motion is out of order, because it's not pertinent to the. To what's in front of us, uh, we're dealing with the the rezoning application, we're not dealing with the library. At this point, so, um, just to double check on my rules of procedure here with the with the clerk. I don't.
Um, I believe it is an out-of-order motion in regards to the rezoning. If it was a motion made separately in regards to the township. Either owning a stra- wanting a strata lot or renting with regards to the library, that would be approach.
Okay, thank you. So, so as amendment, I'm going to rule it out of order. However, councillor Woodward wishes to add this at the. At the, um, when this H one has been dealt with, that would be in order, but because it doesn't relate to this. You can challenge them, I really.
I just want to clarify, so.
No, no, that is, no, sorry, you can't. I've made a ruling and the way it works is that you can challenge the ruling. But I've made a ruling that the motion's out of order and explained why because it's not pertinent to this.
But you will accept the, the motion after this, this third reading.
Would be appropriate, yes.
I would like to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yep, thank you. Okay, so we're back to the main motion. Councillor Long, you hand us up, this will be on the main motion.
Yeah, I'm speaking to it. Okay, you know, uh. It's good discussion because the, the library is important. It's not the proper place though. But I suppose, you know, oh my God, you better not give it third reading because we're so unsure. And after. This half an hour of discussion, we're much more unsure of what it is going on here. Why the word library, et cetera, et cetera. Now councillor Whitmarsh was going to propose a, an amendment to refer it back to staff uh, in terms of discussions about the library. Maybe that's appropriate. Uh, and maybe something I could support, but, but because we are, I guess, listed in there. Or does it say township of Langley? Library, I mean, maybe there's a private library going on.
Yeah, so that's why I say it's, it's a separate.
Yeah, so you've got a, a challenge in front of you there.
No, it's, there's no challenge, no.
Well, I'm going to support it, but I mean, the sooner, I mean, I, I have been supporting this all along, but the discussion of the library is a separate one. And, and, and certainly we can realize how important it is to council and to the, and to the citizens and to the, and I appreciate that and I, I concur with that. Extremely important, where it is, what size it is and what it costs. Where that belongs, maybe I can get some direction, um.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Back and I think you had some kind of concluding comments and we should call the, call the board on this, Mr. Back.
Oh, thank you, your worship. I'm, I'm sensitive to council's needs and I'm trying to, to follow up from some of the comments from councillor Whitmarsh and councillor Woodward. But, but it seems that the applicant and, and very well intentioned has referenced a future, uh, potential possible use. That's led us down a path in terms of what that use should actually look like. Um, there's also the issue in terms of what is the viability of this, uh, this, uh, development? If the use turns out to be different and, and it might be a suggestion, and this is probably going to what councillor Whitmarsh was suggesting or, and or councillor Woodward. That the matter be referred to staff to review the viability of the, uh, the, uh, proposal generally. And that's in the context of whether there be a library or not. And as a second part, review the possible terms of development for a library in this location or otherwise in Willoughby. That's a bit of a standalone, but I think it can encapsulate some of the, some of the discussion we've had so far. So it's a suggestion if it helps council. There may be desire to move ahead, but there seems to be some uncertainty around those two parameters.
Your worship, just to finish my thought then, so when would be the right time to move ahead? You're suggesting we give it the reading and is Mr. Back and suggesting we, we refer it?
The, the referral motions, uh, if I could speak to the referral motions that came earlier, were in order. Um, going to, um, what the use is, I believe is out of order. The procedure would be once this is dealt with by council and whether this passes or fails. The question of the library, whether we rent by or anything else, is, is a discussion that council will have. So. I see that as completely standalone. Uh, Mr. Back and. Your, your comment, just to clarify what you said, that's a standalone. It, it doesn't necessarily have to be in this building. It could be in any building or it could be a standalone building that township buys, rents. Leases, whatever, but that's a separate discussion.
That's correct, your worship. The challenge is because of the reference in the documentation as to the potential library. Uh, is this, uh, structure then viable, uh, if that does not come to fruition? Um, we've made very clear there is no agreement, but that seems to be causing council some concern. And that may be referenced for a referral and that could be very quick one. And the second part then is there probably should be a future discussion about the library. And then we could get into the review of the possible terms for development of that library, whether it be here or in Willoughby. And that's really referencing some of the comments about size, location and timing. Uh, that also could be a standalone or it could be part of, part of this is simply because of the documentation referencing the, uh, the reference to the library.
That's right. And I would assume that if the. If this building is, um, hinges on whether there's a library there or not, and there isn't, then I'm sure that would change. Uh, what the applicant would want to do with that building. So I still see it as something separate, so. Uh, councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, and I guess, um, you know, in following line with what Mr. Back and is suggesting it. It feels to me like, based on what I'm seeing the application, it, it looks like the developer here is. Anticipating that there is going to be a large library on the second floor. And it feels like many of the changes that are being made are to accommodate that. And yet we haven't had that discussion at council. We haven't made any decisions around that at council. And so I'm concerned that there is a, that they are developing a building. That may not have the library and they're building it with the anticipation that it is. And so that's for me why I'm open to the idea of referring this as Mr. Back and has suggested. For some more information and maybe it is around the viability of this building with or without the library and to ensure. That the developer understands and is clearly understanding that there could be a library or not. And make sure they want to go ahead with this building. The way they have it regardless of whether there's a library, because it looks like they are anticipating there's a library. So.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
No, this, that's a separate, I ruled this, that'll be a separate motion. If the builder is anticipating something that hasn't been agreed on, that he's doing it at his own risk. I'm not, I'm not prejudging what. What council do, but you know, he can stick in anything he wants on this, on the, a diagram, but it's a separate motion. So this. Can always come back with a, uh, without a library or shrink it or whatever, but. We have to look at the merits of this and he just indicated proposed library, whether it's Starbucks or anything else. It's a separate issue. We're looking at a zoning issue. So I'm going to call the question.
Mr. Mayor, I actually have a second opportunity to speak on the main motion.
Okay, because I, you're, it's hard to keep track of elements, you go ahead.
But I just wanted to make one small point. I mean, I, you know, I, I think that, um. What we're seeing here is the creation of a second floor. Now, maybe, you know, it's not going to be a lot. Apparently there's a lot more. I mean, I think we all know where this is going. So the second floor of, 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 you know, amending it to create twenty thousand extra square feet of commercial floor area has a significant value. Uh, it was approved at a different era and a different time. I think we hopefully have learned a lot about the, the one-sided nature of some of this development here in the township of Langley. So I, I do consider this to be a pretty unfair deal for the township, like, thanks to taxpayer and I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, councillor Ferguson.
Well, certainly an awful lot's been said here and I, whether in a future motion or something, I mean, I was under an impression that, uh. That there were some discussions around a multi-use, uh, bill, multi, a library and something else. If I made through the chair, was there a discussion about a multi-use, uh, within the T O L people and, uh, and the applicant?
Uh, Mrs. Seffy.
Your worship, the discussions around this particular project go back a, a number of years. And, uh, there may have been discussions about multi-use and I guess the other point I wanted to make was that. Uh, you know, commercial retail units can often be, uh, modified and, and reconfigured. Uh, based on the desire of the landlord as to the ultimate intent. So. Uh, it can be modified to be less than twelve thousand square feet. Uh, currently. Uh, the proponent has indicated, as has been discussed extensively. That the second floor is intended to occupy, to be occupied by a single user and then in bracket, potentially a library. But then that can be quite easily modified to something else. Uh, and you know, that's something that should be born in mind.
Okay, no, I knew, I thought it was T O L and, and the applicant in something like, uh. Multi-use floor space, uh, multi-use library, multi-use daycare. I mean, I, I think a whole bunch of things. I heard through the grapevine being discussed. Anyway, um, I hope in the future, you know, maybe somebody comes up with a, uh. A deferral or other motion to look into the library and to what we're going to do in that, in that particular location. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so just clarification, Mr. Seffy, so. The proponent, the applicant on this, I'm looking at the diagram here. If they fail to make an agreement with whoever wants for the library in their township or community group or whatever. They have the option to, to put whatever they want. This is a. Uh, this is proposal, it's not in, in set in stone, as I understand it. And, uh, if they chose to reduce that whole floor, does that have to come back to council or would that be within the? The, um, permitted applications that we're voting on tonight, today.
Your worship, as long as the use remains the same or within the same general area, i.e. Uh, office slash commercial, they would not have to come back to council.
So, so we're not bypassing, we're not binding the township to, to renting this or purchasing it or anything else. It's, it's just was a proposal. Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed. Councillor Woodward opposed, so it carries. Thank you. Can I ask councillor Arneson to come back in? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to make that original motion that you ruled out of order.
Okay, um, yeah, we can do that here. It's, I mean, you can do it on the other business or you can do it. Just, just so I'm checking with the clerk, Ms. Bauer. Just, just hold on, give me a second, you guys. I gotta figure this out with the clerk. Um, so, uh, I think councillor Arneson. Should come in and if she believes she's in conflict, then we should give her the opportunity to, to leave again. So if we just, uh. Bear with me, we can deal with it now.
You need me to read that again or does the clerk have it?
We have to wait for councillor Arneson and then, uh, to come back in the meeting. And then, uh, if you want to read it, then she, then councillor Arnes can declare whether she's in conflict or not.
Perhaps the clerk can read it out for us? Thank you.
Okay, so this will be a motion, um, Ms. Bauer.
The motion was that any proposed library be, uh. Leave the motion was that any proposed library be, uh, as a strata property with ownership to the town, the ownership to the township. And that it would not be a rental unit.
Can I, can I vary?
I, I think, yeah, you need to, if councillor Woodward, if you wish to disword it, so it's a standalone motion.
That's not, I, I mean, I can, I get the challenge of the clerk that I would like to try to. The actual motion was, uh, that any proposed library that may or may not be provided. To the township of Langley be via strata lot ownership, not as a rental tenancy.
Yeah, point of order, your worship.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, I know, it's, it's, I'll allow the motion. If there's, if there's a seconder.
I'll second it for discussion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. So. Yeah, uh, just everybody slow on a little bit. We've got less time. Councillor Woodward, speak to your motion and then.
Yeah, thanks. So I think it's self-explanatory. I mean, I won't belabor it again and again. I think I covered this in some of the initial discussion, but for councillor Arnes' benefit. Um, you know, some of us.
I just want to check councillor Arneson, are you comfortable to be in here? Okay, so we'll just give councillor Arneson, she's out, okay, go ahead councillor Woodward.
So I think that's, uh, so then I don't need to repeat some of that. So I think that, you know, if we're heading down the direction of this is now a, an adopted bylaw. Not adopted, sorry, granted third reading, uh, which cannot be reversed or undone, uh, without legal ramifications. So I think we're headed down the path here that. Uh, we all know this, we were presented with this, uh, library in an open workshop. Uh, not in, in another different kind of meeting, in an open workshop. This has been going on for some time. Uh, in my opinion, we, we should not be, uh, renting these locations from private interests. We should be heading down the path of a better deal for township taxpayers. In an ownership position. We've just created millions of dollars in value for this development corporation. We should not now be turning around and renting that back and paying even more money. I mean, the idea of it, I think we should be. Looking at strata ownership position if we are going to be proceeding with a library. Thank you.
Okay, um, got my name on the list here. I, I think it's a valid discussion to have. But I, I believe it should be on, uh, not just one particular library, one particular neighborhood. It needs to be on all libraries. And again, we have that discussion on all facilities. So, uh, I, I don't want to make, um, I, I can't support a motion that's going to be so restrictive on. One particular area, one particular library. I think that discussion has to be had and, and we have to always remain open. To what's in the best interest of the township and maybe strata ownership, it may be leasing. I don't know that what comes in the future. But at this point, I think those discussions will come through, it's a right word, organically, as the proposals come forward to council. We can have a discussion on. Each individual, because as I understand it, Mr. Back and we, we do lease library space in other locations, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, your worship. There are a number of libraries that we do lease.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so it's just my comments. I think the intent is good, uh, but it needs to be discussed as, as the proposals come forward. Councillor Long?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I think we leave them all except the one at, uh, the one at, in Willoughby. Um, I, I continue to repeat and I don't want to be, um, you know. Belabor it like somebody else said about their points, but I mean, this is not the place to have it. So. Will you entertain a motion to be furthest to staff? We're going to have, we need to have a workshop. We need to decide where we're going to go and whether it's rented. Or strata or, or purchased or built, those are decisions that we have to make outside of today. I don't think there was a motion on this. I don't think it was on the agenda. So, um. What's the suggestion, your worship, to vote it down or have it referred to staff?
Either way, it's going to be at, at the staff level as proposals come forward, whether it's this one or another one. It's still going to come to council. We, we don't. We don't, by making this motion, it may put us in a position for other ones that we may not want to be in. That's all I'm saying is that. Vote it down, it'll come back. We don't need to have a discussion on that, I think, as they come, because each one is, should be determined on its own merits. But that's up to council.
What I do like about this, even though I've taken a lot of emphasis to the way it's coming about, is that we're discussing something that's very, very important. So. I will make the referral, uh, if you'll accept it, your worship, to refer this to staff for a future workshop. And I don't, I don't know if it's in the open or closed.
CPC, that's our, that's our mechanism.
No, because it may be, it may be a closed session if we're negotiating. So I'll just, I'll decide refer it to, to, to staff for a future discussion.
Okay, this is our seconder to the referral. Okay, is, uh, I still have hands up there. So on the referral, councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I support the referral.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Woodward?
Uh, yeah, so I think that might have had a minor, uh, mistake or oversight on my part in the, uh, original motion. The, you know, looking at it technically, yes, it does say any proposed, but I, I think the intent, I would be clear what my intent was. Uh, was not to create a new policy township-wide. It was that any proposed library at this location. Uh, in this particular proposal building. So I, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you, I mean, I guess you take it as a direction, but I would like to see the record reflect. That motion be amended before referral to make it very clear that the intent and discussion was to be about, it was to be about this particular library in this particular building.
I would agree with Adam if there is.
Sure, with unanimous consent, uh, we'll have that amendment and then I'm going to call the question on the referral, all those in favor, without amendment, all, all those in favor? Opposed. Councillor Woodward is opposed, referral carries. Okay. Well. There we are. And move on to H two and it's a rezoning application number one zero zero five one seven and development permit application numbers one zero zero ninety-five. And one zero one one four six, Mitchell Latimer, one nine six zero block of seventy-six avenue. And it's by law five six four eight. Could I have a motion, please? Oh, hold it, we got to get councillor Arneson back in here. I've jumped ahead. Different ones, when it's not in live. There we go. Councillor Arneson, you're back. I'm going to start all over again. We're on H two and it's rezoning application number one zero zero five one seven and development permit application numbers one zero zero ninety-five and one. Zero one one four five, Mitchell Latimer, by law five six four eight. Uh, could I have a motion, please? Somebody, councillor Coontz and a seconder. Have a second. Councillor Whitmarsh. And discussion, none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed. Councillor Arneson opposed, it carries, it's one of the obsession. Right, we want to H. H three. So officially in plan amendment and rezoning application number one zero zero one seven three and heritage alteration permit application number one zero one zero three one. By law five six four zero and by law five six four one. This is Gray Rose. Now, there's a bit of a technicality. I just want to check with, uh, CEO, Mr. Back and. Uh, there's been some changes, so we need to put this on the floor and then amend it to the changes from what was previously presented to council.
That's, that's correct, your worship. This matter is going for council, before council for third reading. Uh, they should move and second it and then any amendments can take place at that point.
Okay, so I'll look to council for a motion on H three.
Point of order, it, it was been seconded already.
I don't think I did, did I? No, I didn't. No, I haven't taken it. Uh, I'll check with the clerk. It was referred to staff, uh, it was, so it was moved. Uh, I'll check with the clerk. It was referred to staff. Uh, it was, so it was moved and seconded, referred to staff. So now it's back. So we still have to move and second it.
Actually, I'll move, okay, I'll move third reading.
Counsel Long moves it seconded by, have a second, Counsel, Counselor Whitmarsh? Okay, and then, uh, if council saw desires, there were some, uh, changes to this and perhaps staff could, uh, just outline what those changes are and then they could be made as a motion to amend. Uh, Mr. Seffy?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, I think it might help if I was to share uh, my screen with.
Yes, please.
Your worship.
Thank you.
Are you able to see this, your worship?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, so thank you for the opportunity, your worship. Just in terms of, I guess, uh, the background, uh, council is aware, obviously, the location of the site. The fact that it's part of the Marielville Heritage Conservation Area, the fact that back in nineteen eighty-nine, council did approve limited commercial uses for the subject site, uh, for the area, actually, for that matter. Uh, and the subject site was the subject of the previous application, which went through a process. And based on public feedback, it was amended to be what it is that was given first and second reading by council. And then, uh, as part of the public hearing process, council referred a idea of swapping the buildings A and B uh, to staff to discuss with the applicant. Uh, the applicant has discussed or contemplated that and, and considered it. And, uh, they've come back with a submission, your worship, that is part of the, the package to council. And, uh, it has two options. Option A is as per the, uh, referral. In other words, it does provide for the swapping of the two buildings. I'm just going down the slides to get to the one that I wanted to show council in terms of the, uh, the changes that have occurred since the referral was made. So this is option A, your worship. And if I can just maybe spend a few minutes to, to let council know, uh, what it's showing, what it's intended to show. Uh, the shaded areas, the gray shaded area is where the, uh, the potential option A would show the buildings. If you see in the ghost red dash line, this is where the building was or the buildings were originally proposed as part of the application that council gave first and second reading to. So the red line again, it shows where the buildings were presented to council. And then the, the gray shaded area is what a mirroring would look like. Now, the reason why this is important is because this slide also tries to, uh, let us know what the views will do or what the relocation of the buildings would do to the views is a better, better way of putting it. So this line here, where I've got my cursor, your worship, is a view from this building to, I guess, the, uh, the northwest, uh, over the, the five corners and, and I guess to the North Shore Mountains. Uh, the other line, the other dash line is the view the other way towards the historic Travelers Motel, Hotel. And, and the fact that it is intended to be protected, this view was the one that was referenced in the Marielville Community Plan and, and the other various heritage, uh, I guess, documents that we have in terms of protection of the view corridors. And as you can see, the buildings were previously designed, again, those being the, the red dash line. Previously designed to make sure that the view is protected. By swapping the buildings, going back to the, uh, the, uh, shaded gray area, then we no longer are able to provide that same, uh, unobstructed view corridor from, uh, the Old Yale Road and, and, and the historic, uh, five corners. As well, it will block the view from this building to the south of the subject property to the northwest. So, uh, in terms of, I guess, what improvements the other, I guess, option that the applicant has suggested and staff recommends in terms of, uh, uh, a, a way that we might be able to move forward, rather than option A being the, the swapping of the building, is this one, your worship, which is I guess, uh, composed of several, several components. And if I can just, again, spend a few minutes just to, uh, walk you through the changes, your worship, uh, the applicant is proposing to, first of all, relocate what was referred to as a courtyard, uh, north of building B to north of building A. Uh, that's part one. Part two is relocating a pedestrian connection further to the west. Uh, this third part is to actually enhance the landscaping between the proposed building and in fact, between the, the subject site and the property to the east. The other one, part four, I guess, part D, would be to relocate, reorient the, uh, the door that provides access to the garbage enclosure from east looking to south looking. So no longer will we access the, uh, the operation of the garbage area would be accessible from the east or rather from the south. And finally, your worship, the, uh, the other amendments that the applicant has proposed, that will be part of option B that staff recommends are not able to be shown on a map because they are actually legal instruments. Based on the feedback received at the public hearing, the applicant is agreed to register a covenant on the title that would prohibit any kind of a storage of material, equipment or garbage uh, in this area between the two, two properties, the subject property and the property to the east. As well as a covenant on the title that would require future owners, occupiers and tenants of the buildings to, to be responsible for maintaining the landscaping to the, to the same level as council approved at time of approval, if in fact it was to be approved. So that is the summary of the, uh, the recommendations in terms of option B, your worship.
Thank you very much, uh, for that. So, so what we have here are, I guess, um, three options. One is to do nothing, uh, and carry on as, as it is in front of us. That's what's been moved and seconded as H three. Uh, other is to, um, move option A and others as an amendment or move option B as amendment. Um, staff, uh, after that explanation from staff, uh, in, uh, in, I think the view corridor or the sightlines are, are important to maintain. I would recommend, it's up to council. At option B, we moved as an, as a, uh, amendment, as stated in the, in the report to to, uh, address the concerns raised at the public hearing by council. So if there is someone who wished to move option B, it could be tested by council. Counsel Whitmarsh, is there a seconder?
I need counselor. Yeah, sorry, I move, uh, option B.
Is there a seconder? To option B, Counsel Woodward. Okay, discussion on the amendment, um, Counsel Ferguson.
Yeah, it seems like we're odd times right here, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know that, um, Counsel Richter had her idea of think something similar to, uh, B, but she wanted to see the impact of it. And I know that she's not here and Counsel Davis is not here. I was wondering if, if you'd accept, uh, uh, I'm not sure if it's a deferral or what, a referral of, uh, this for one week, that would be where we would look at it again with a full council, I think, I believe, December fourteenth. If I, if you would entertain that as a motion right now or wait for speaker, speakers?
Um, certainly, that's, uh, that would be in order. I've got Counsel Whitmarsh and Counsel Long wishing to speak. If you don't hold off on that and, and then uh, we can just go through, uh, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine, uh, either way. I certainly, uh, support option B, but, um, if you want to wait, uh, your worship till next time, I I can do that, but, um, I'm also fine to go today.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Long?
Yeah, I don't really see three options because, um, the option A, if, I, I don't even think it can be allowed because the, uh, Mr. Seffy mentioned, that's part of the Marielville plan was to protect those view corridor, at least of the travelers in. So that one, in my opinion, is out. Uh, I, I really did like the courtyard in the original, uh, application. I think it kinda mimicked five corners and of course, I'm all about public space and I think that would be terrific, but I can't, uh, deny that that would impact the travelers. And if, you know, if it was a successful public space, then it's, it's gonna be potentially detrimental to some guests potentially. I mean, personally, if I were staying there, I'd love to have a, a party on the patio in front of my room. But, um, so I, I, I think I'm gonna be happy to, to, uh, even though, uh, uh, it's a shame that that feature's been removed. I think we have to deal with what was presented at the public hearing. Mr. Martin made a huge, uh, uh, effort to convince us that the public space in front would be detrimental. So I think I'm, I'm comfortable to move with option B and let's get this project on the go.
Thank you, Counsel Woodward.
Thanks. I just had a couple of questions about option B, looking at it here, um, trying to find a direct comparison to the original plan. Maybe Mr. Seffy can just speed this up for us. Um, you know, we, we heard a lot about the view corridor from the Old Yale through five corners to keep the, the B and B visible, that we seem to be putting a, you know, adding or putting a fair number of trees in that view corridor. So over some, you know, lengthy period of time, uh, do we, you know, we have the proponent basing their site plan on this view corridor that we then fill up with trees. Uh, would I, would I have that right or is there something I'm, I'm missing?
Mr. Seffy, uh, if you could maybe provide more information on the proposed landscaping, if it, if it includes, um, you know, what height type of vegetation be planted there?
Well, the landscaping, your worship, thank you for the opportunity. The landscaping, uh, is not intended to, to restrict, uh, views. It's really a, a buffer and, and, and more of, I guess, a recreational opportunity. But I did wanna show these pictures to council that regardless of, of what the subject applicant does, this is what the, the area currently looks like. So this is the view from the east. Uh, and then this is the view also from the five corners. So there is some, some existing, I guess, arguably, uh, uh, trees that might, that might inhibit abuse, uh, but the intent is not to plant trees in that area, but lower, loo- rather lower level uh, vegetation that would act as, as a vegetation buffer.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna keep going, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yep, okay. So I appreciate that clarification. I, I won't belabor the point. I mean, I, I see nice beautiful view lines. We've I think, uh, proponent is, I don't, I don't recall a proponent trying to accommodate the neighbor quite like this one, uh, that I can even remember. Or recall, uh, so I think it's hopefully it's time for this one to, to come to the, to come to an end. I just will note that we, we, we have quite significant setbacks here and then we put a bunch of trees in them. Um, so I'll just leave it there, Mr. Mayor. I, I support whatever, uh, council supports to, to get this one done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Counsel Ferguson, you'd asked for, uh, ability to put a referral motion to.
Yeah, it's Mr. Mayor, if I, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes, go ahead.
It's, yeah, just for one meet, one week, I'm just asking council because I know that Counsel Richter had suggested this and Counsel Davis, I'd just like to see a full council. If they're not here next week, that's fine, but just one week only. Uh, I'm not, is it, is it a referral or defer?
It'd be deferred.
It's deferred.
Deferred, yeah, deferral.
Defer the decision and I would so move.
Okay, is there a seconder? Counsel Woodward seconds it.
Discussion on the. Or discussion, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, any, any discussion on the deferral? Seeing that, I'm gonna call the question. Oh, Counsel Long, right here. You're muted, you're muted. There you go.
I don't, I don't, uh, Counsel Richter did not, uh, necessarily, uh, ask for this option B. She wanted option A. So that one's out as far as I'm concerned. I don't think we need to, to defer. I think we should move on with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will, um, call the question on the deferral. All those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, Counsel Woodward, uh, froze, Counsel Arnesson, Counsel Long opposed. So we're back to the amendment. Uh, so you know, for the discussion on the amendment, I'll call the question on the amendment and this is, uh, option B. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Arnesson opposed. Uh, the amendment passes. We're back to the main motion as amended. Lost. Any, any discussion on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Arnesson, Counsel Ferguson, motion carries. All right, I'm gonna ask, uh, we'll take a seventh inning stretch. I've been here for two hours. We're, we're launching to the, uh, uh, med- non-medical cannabis retail sales. That may take some time, so I just need a bit of a stretch. So, uh, back at, uh, three fifteen? Three fifteen. Thank you. All right, um, just let everyone put the cameras on so we know that we're, we're back in session. I'll reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of Townshipalaney Council, the regular meeting, I should say, of Townshipalaney Council. And, um, let's see, Counsel Long, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Arnesson, um, Spanish, Counsel Kuntz, Counsel Woodward and Counsel Ferguson. And I know, we'll move. We should have everybody here for the next one.
I'm here, but my, somehow my video doesn't work.
Oh, okay.
Hang on.
Uh, you have a.
There it is. I got it now.
Yeah, good. And Counsel Ferguson? See your smiling face. So I think, um, with this next, uh, third reading, H four, uh, Mr. Backen's gonna give a bit of a preamble. Uh, so I'd like to have all of council here for that. Counsel Ferguson? We'll give him a minute and then we'll get started.
Are we live?
Uh, we're just waiting for you. Sorry, it could, because the next, uh, H, H three is, uh, Mr. Backen's gonna give us a bit of a preamble before we get going, or H four, I should say. Before we get going on it. So I wanna make sure that, uh, everyone is here. So now that you're here, we have everyone. So we'll start with H four. And this is, uh, the non-medical cannabis retail sales development applications. And I'm just gonna read out the bylaws and then before we take any motions, we're gonna lay out, uh, a process that Mr. Back and I discussed that may help us move forward. Um, so it's by law, uh, five six five one, five six five two, five six five three, five six three zero, five six five four, five six five seven, and five six five nine. So, um, as there are multiple, multiple, uh, bylaws here, multiple locations, uh, and then on medical cannabis retail sales. Uh, I'm gonna ask Mr. Backen just to start with, um, a process that we could follow at, at the pleasure of council that may help, uh, move some forward that council wishes to see move forward. And, uh, and if those that we feel aren't appropriate, uh, due to land use that, uh, they can be moved and defeated, uh, on the spot. But if there's some merit that they should be, we, um, deferred until we've heard, seen the other applications that are coming to council next week. And then we can, um, consider them all at once. Uh, Mr. Backen, if you can provide your preamble.
Thank you, your worship. Um, you're, you're quite correct. There is a, another group of applications coming forth that, uh, historically didn't meet some of the criteria we were using, uh, for the licensing element of this. That's why there's a separate batch coming forward. So the question then becomes, what are we doing this week and next week at this point? And really, we're focusing on the use, the land use. We're, we're not really worrying about licensing. Uh, that's gonna come at a subsequent meeting. We're simply dealing with the land used issues. Now, land use and licensing does come together, but sometimes it does not when the land use is such that it does, that does not merit or warrant support, given some of the, uh, the feelings of the public or council's direction. So right down before us, we have seven bylaws. The suggestion is we proceed with each one independently and that we determine which ones, uh, are worthy of further consideration as to use. Notice I didn't suggest that they be adopted or, or passed. Uh, I simply said that they be worthy of further consideration. Meaning that there may be some bylaws here, after you've looked at the proposals, reflected upon them, heard from the public that you strongly feel do not warrant any further consideration as to land use. So the process would be really if we take the the first bylaw, if we feel that it does merit further consideration as to land use, perhaps in conjunction with others, that it be referred to a subsequent meeting for consideration with the remaining bylaws that warranted further consideration as to land use. If you feel it does not, whichever bylaw it is, then it would be appropriate not to refer it, but simply to adjudicate upon it uh to make a decision on it, presumably with a few that that bylaw would not uh be given or granted third reading. In that way, if there were to be uh something that uh that did suddenly crop up and a bylaw did then go forward, it would likely have to be reconsidered uh because we'd wanna deal with them en masse. Councils, I think this the discretion and determination is they wish to deal with these en masse, but only those that they feel are worthy of additional consideration as to land use. And then we can go on to the licensing. In that way, it may be that none advance, it may be that two advance. It may be at the end of the day that there are fewer than the eight areas we've contemplated. There may be uh four in total, there may be six in total. For that matter, there could be twelve in total. Council's discretion on this is unfettered by the policy documents we have. But to kick the process off, we really need to figure out which ones are not worthy of the uh of further consideration because of the land use. Your worship, does that help?
Yes, it does. So and I and I I see uh some questions. We'll take those prior to the prior to the moving of these bylaws, because I know some members of council may find themselves in conflict with certain of ones, and and we'll deal with those as we move through. But this is uh really a discussion. This is on the process we're gonna follow. So one thing I just wanna highlight that Mr. Backen said is that uh if we do go forward with with the third reading, and if it does pass, uh I would ask for uh immediately ask for reconsideration that we could defer till we've heard the other ones. It's not uh to be negative to what council's wishes are, but I think the idea is that for the if it's defeated, then then we know that it 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 wouldn't wouldn't go forward. So that's if that's what council would like to, you know, somehow how we can move through this. If council like to see me do that, I certainly would would uh just bring it up back on for reconsideration so that we can just put it back on the table and then just refer it till we've heard from all of them. Uh so that's just one way of doing it. So I'm gonna go through the list here. And remember, this is just questions on the process. Uh Counsel Ferguson? You're muted, uh Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, yeah, this is on the uh process, Mr. Mayor. Again, although different than last than the last application. Um we don't have a full council today, and these matters are of paramount. And I'm not sure what other counselors are gonna think are paramount these matters. And I was wondering, you know, and I think you'll have to wait, go through the speakers list, but uh to come back to me again is a uh either referral, it was this particular one would be referral of these and other application to either next week's meeting or another meeting, a special meeting of council. We might even meet, I have to meet on a special day, although I don't know. Um so we can do what Mr. Back and and others perhaps will suggest as well, whether we want to accept all eight or ten or twelve or uh three to four, depending on the areas. Um I think this has been a very, very difficult and trying process, and uh without all all of us here and making this paramount decisions, um certainly that would be something when the time comes, I would certainly ask for a referral. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. It would be a a deferral, but that that's that's fair. Um Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have some challenges with the bylaw five, six, five, one, five, six, five, two, and five, six, five, three. Um there, I would, I just wanna highlight, so I I have participated in 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 the cannabis discussion uh outside of Fort Langley. Uh I would like to also, when the time comes, uh make a deferral for a full council. Um but I have to be careful that I'm not, uh you have to move division potentially, or I may also need to seek some additional legal files. So I may, in fact, just recuse me into our process, depending on how you wanna handle that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um I think i- if you treat all of them the same as as one deferral, I don't think you'd see that as a conflict, but uh that's my opinion. You have to make up your own mind. I totally totally agree with you. We'll we'll break it up a few. So if that makes you feel more comfortable, we can certainly do that, no problem.
Yeah, we can we can also, we can break it up if I think at a minimum, and I'm also prepared to uh to recuse for the entirety if if we're just looking at a deferral. I do have to work with Mr. Back and uh based on some of the submissions that have come in even as early as an hour before the meeting.
Yeah.
I think I do have to consult Mr. Black. So I would be looking for defer for that purpose, but also for a full council.
Sure. Uh and and just for council's information, what we would do is we would move them and then defer them. And then at that point, the public hearing process, the submissions is not is then closed on these. Uh so we do wanna get them on the, get this on the table first, and then once it's been moved and seconded, if council wishes to defer them to the next meeting, we could do that. So uh we will, I I'll I'll recognize that we will uh consider breaking it up into into two blocks, two or three blocks. I believe there's another member of council uh might feel the same. Counsel Long?
Well, your worship, I'm really ready to vote on them now. I think uh we've gone through a very lengthy process, and if with respect, I would say that every time council decides to do something with it, it doesn't make the situation in my mind any better. Uh we've we had a process uh that we're following now, and I'm ready to vote on them. And with that way, we can dispense of these, and then the future meeting, we can we can deal with those. But I've uh I've given it lots of thought, lots of research, and I'm happy to proceed uh with dealing with them on a one-off, you know, each one individually right now.
Okay, thank you.
And and I appreciate the comment about full council, but you know, we do need to get on with this. I think it's been going on for a long, long time. And uh we still have a a council here that we can uh get a an opinion from. So I think it's still a valid vote regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh and I just wanna ask Counsel Arneson, uh do you believe you'll be in conflict? And and if you could tell me which one, and then I can certainly separate that out also. Uh you're you're muted, you're muted, Counsel Arneson. You're on mute.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Yes, um I I would like to recuse myself for five, six, five, seven.
Five, six, five, s- five, seven?
Yeah, that's Brookswood.
No, I think it's five, six, five, nine. Your your uh Brookswood is five, six, five, nine.
Okay, sorry, I I thought I correctly noted which one it is. It's the very last one.
Well, yeah, the last one, two hundred
The very last one.
Forty thousand is five, six, five, nine.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll I'll certainly bear that in mind. All right. Well, thanks for that input. I think what we'll do then is there's some that and they may all get deferred, but I think uh the plan, what I'll do is go through each one individually. And then uh rather than do a blanket, because there may be one, as Mr. Backen said, that we could dispense with, but they may all get deferred. Uh certainly uh we'll go through the process uh that there is. So Counsel Woodward will be going through the first three. Uh so if you wish to declare a conflict at this point, and I'll call you back in when we're when we've um dealt with five, six, five, three.
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. I'll be declaring a conflict of interest on those given property ownership in the vicinity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so um and Counsel Ferguson uh and Counsel uh Counsel Ferguson, I know you you I don't wanna do a blanket deferral. I wanna give each one its own individual due, but it may be that they're all gonna be deferred. But certainly um uh we'll go through each one. So on bylaw five
Do you want me to go one at a time, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so I'm gonna go five, six, five, one, and it's um
Well, I'll move it.
Berg property. So first of all, we wanna move first and second reading, and then and then if there is a deferral, it would come after that. So Counsel Long moves. Is there a second or? To five, six, five, one?
Third reading, your worship.
Sorry, third reading, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Slip of the tongue. Okay, so move by Counsel Long, second by Counsel Kuntz, uh Mr. Backen?
Your worship, just a point of clarification. A deferral is different to than a referral. The deferral would simply be to the next meeting. The referral we contemplated earlier was to determine uh if it was gonna be worthy of further consideration by the council. So that may be to a subsequent meeting on the fourteenth, where we would have all those bylaws that were worthy of further consideration uh from both this week and the fourteenth. So just to make that subtle distinction, because there could be a bit of a misunderstanding.
Okay, so the so the proper motion is a referral if counsel should choose to the next meeting.
I think Counselor uh Ferguson is different. I think he is saying uh I I like, he'd like to see them deferred until we have a full council.
Full council.
Where our process was referral, my only comment would be, uh and I really respect the fa- the fact of the deferral, would be that if there are five counselors that are not in favor, uh then the 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 parties that are not present are not affected by it, but you'll have to determine what the best process is.
So even if um Counsel Ferguson wanted to move referral uh for further discussion with the full council, that's appropriate. And for further and and on the merits, does that be, yeah, that would be
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah. I just wanna ensure that when we're complete today's uh H four, that it's clearly understood that the it it that third reading has been considered, and no further submissions would be uh occurring. So that's why we term it as a referral to the next meeting of council um to discuss the merits of the of of the and the land use of the uh bylaw and um with full council. Is that right, Mr. Backen? Yes. Okay, so uh Counsel Ferguson, uh there's uh if you just wanna make the motion, I'd like to go through speakers first, but if if you wish to speak to it.
I'll wait, you go through the speakers first.
So co- Counsel Long, on five, six, five, one.
Thank you. So I'm gonna uh say the same thing on all of these. There are uh, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. There are nine applications in one, two, three, five areas. Uh so I I feel that there are, there's no need to have quite so many in the in within the township. Uh so I'm going to be voting against this one. Uh and I guess we'll speak to each one as they go, but uh uh there's there's three or so on this list that I I think would be workable, in my opinion. Um and the rest I would probably not, well, I won't be supporting. And so I I hope that you'll just call the vote, and then we can
Yeah, well, yeah, we've got the process. Uh Mr. Seffy?
As I said earlier, your worship, I'm not really keen on deferring or referring. I think we gotta deal with it.
Okay.
But
Fair enough. Mr. Seffy?
Against this.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to uh make sure that council is aware that even though nine applications were granted first and second reading by council, uh council is currently looking at seven applications for third reading. And that's because one applicant has withdrawn their application. And one applicant was not able to install the appri- appropriate signage in time for the application to be considered for for third reading tonight. So that leaves seven, your worship.
Thank you. Yeah, so as as it is in our agenda, I know in the report it shows nine, but on the agenda, we're proceeding with the uh seven that are in front of us. Okay. Okay. Okay, so uh Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, yeah, sir. I certainly you moved that uh it's referral motion for uh for next meeting or another consequent meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um second or? Is there a second? Counsel Whitmarsh, Ferguson and Whitmarsh. Second on on the old Counsel Long on the uh referral, and we can just test it with counsel and see if it goes.
The motion is a referral or a deferral?
It's a referral uh to the next meeting.
Well.
To discuss the merits of this.
We're still, we're still at full council.
And and to to discuss a full, to to discuss
We're never gonna have a full council.
To discuss the merits of this application uh based on land use. That's the reason for the referral.
Okay, well, I don't uh support that. There there's never gonna be a full council, because you've got a certain council that that is withdrawing from the discussions anyway. Uh and and there'll be all kinds of reasons why some of us may may not uh want to participate for conflict of interest reasons or whatever they are. So I I I don't support the referral. I think I'd just like to get it dealt with. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Ferguson, did you wish to speak to it?
No, that's it. Okay, that's it.
Okay, so on the referral, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Referral? Opposed? Okay, we have um Counsel Long, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz. I'll throw my hand in there. Counsel Mayor froze opposed. So now it's on the table, uh discussion on five, six, five, one. Counsel Kuntz?
Yeah, after a lot of, we drove around on Saturday and went to each and every one of these applications just to get a sense of of where they were and um, you know, went through a lot of the uh all the information and um, you know, with the public feedback, this is probably the only one that I'm going to be supporting in Fort Langley. Um if we have one that we're gonna support just due to public feedback. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Counseler for Counsel Ferguson, your hand is still up. Did you wish to speak? Uh you're muted.
Since we are not referring, you know, differ, I think I um I would happen to agree with uh Counsel Kuntz on this particular one after you're looking at all the details, looking at the the scoring seven out of seven. Uh if anything makes sense, this one makes sense, and uh um that's all I have to say, other than I will be supporting this particular one.
Thank you. Uh Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I I'm going to uh support this one. Um I think um we have lots of information from the public on all the different locations in in this community. And uh this is the one that had the least concerns, and uh so I will support this one to move forward.
Thank you. Counsel Long, or yeah, Counsel Long or then Arneson, Counsel Long?
Yeah, no, I just, I think I've said already, I'm not gonna say this one. Um I don't, we have to, okay, you know, we we've talked about a lot of parameters here. Um and we've parameters, and we've talked about the different scoring and so forth. I don't think we have to have all of them. I mean, that was that was part of the public consultation almost a year ago, over a year ago. It over again, quite a while ago. Or, you know, let's have one in each of the eight communities, but that that doesn't necessarily have to have to be. I think there's ability for people to get around the township and uh and and get what they need. And I don't, I just don't think the fort is a the village is really uh the place for a shop anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Uh I concur with some of my colleagues. I think for me, this is uh the the best option. And just to remind council that just because we're putting this forward, doesn't mean we're endorsing. And finally, we'll have one. It just gives us an opportunity to once again vet them as opposed to all of the applications. And in the end, we have a hundred percent discretion to decide not to have any or to have as many as we feel is preferable in the community. So I, but I do support this one.
Okay, so uh thanks for that. Uh what we have here is uh the the thought, the beginning was that we would, if they did merit further discussion, then we should proceed that we would refer to the next meeting. So when we have them all, if we didn't want it, we would defeat it. Now, this one looks like it's going going to pass. So uh I'm, if I if it was to pass, I could reconsider. So we could just refer and 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 do it with the rest of them, but we've already had a referral motion that's been defeated. So I can, I'd have to reconsider that. Is that right? Okay, thanks. Just so council's aware of, you know, we wanna make sure that we're fair to everybody. Okay, so um so basically, this carries, I'll just reconsider as we get a referral, so we can get it all in together. And if it's to be defeated by a sound margin, it wouldn't be referred. So Counsel Whitmarsh, do you speak again?
Yeah, I'm just um just making sure I understand.
Yes.
Um because uh if if we were to, my understanding is that if we were to to uh vote in favor of this one today, then that is that not the equivalent of passing third reading?
It is, yes, and
What we're, what, but but your uh suggestion was that we would if we would, we would defer these ones, or maybe it's a reffer, but we would
Yeah. I'll let Mr. Backen explain.
We would now refer this one to be part of the other one, so we can consider them all at the same time.
The ones that we can, the ones that we believe have merit. We wanna move forward. Mr. Backen, if you can just give some clarification?
Thank you, your worship. I'll I'll try to explain in the context of the three Fort Langley applications, but purely as illustrations. I think where the confusion stems from is uh there was first of all, an attempt to defer. Uh I think Counselor Ferguson was attempting to defer consideration of perhaps all of the list until we had a full council. What I observed was that that attempt to defer was unsuccessful. It was defeated, I think, with only Counselor Ferguson uh in in favor. And uh we have one member of council in conflict, so that would tell me that there the maximum might be two, two parties in favor. So therefore, we come to the merits of the application itself. If the application is given third reading, well, then it's given third reading, and that causes some complications, as there may be other applications that follow, fifty-two and fifty-three, that then uh could be precluded from advancing theoretically, which is not appropriate, as this is a land use matter. Uh so we need to give them due consideration regardless of that licensing. So as a consequence, if council supports one application, the appropriate process is to actually refer it to a future meeting where all those that have been referred can be considered. And that way, then, if this one was to be again referred uh to a future meeting where all applications could be considered, presumably fifty-two and fifty-three would be unsuccessful at the time of third reading, and they would then fall off the list, and we would go forward with this application. So it's a bit of a nomenclature, I think, that's causing some challenges, because as I heard it, I think Counselor Ferguson deferred. That was unsuccessful. I looked at the clerk on that, and then at this point, the motion, before you call the question, you may seek to refer it.
So so I thank you, Mr. Backen. So there's definitely, I guess we're gonna learn on the first one as we move through. So definitely some confusion. So whether he deferred or referred it, I think at this point, uh I think it'd be appropriate for me to say that, uh bring back their their motion, the referral motion, uh and uh we'll bring that back at this point. And so then we can vote on the referral motion again. That doesn't, if it goes forward, it doesn't kill this one. It sounds like council would would be in favor of it, but we wanna give it due consideration of land use once all the
If you need a referral motion, uh
So I'm I'm putting it back on the floor. So I'm gonna So I'm, I'm putting it back on the floor. So I'm gonna call the question on that. So all those. Refer, all those in favor referral. Okay, so that's, and opposed.
Right, I'm sorry. You, you.
So now we're just referring it to the next meeting, this one. Okay, and counsel along opposed. Okay, so that's referred.
I just point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, I think actually that was where I was going well. So you and I are same, we're on the same page. Thank you.
So I'm sorry, reconsidered it. It just, uh, I think we're all working our way through this. Okay, so five, six, five, two, um, a motion for third reading for five, six, five, two, to get it on the floor. Counsel Kunst, the second, Counsel Long, so now on the.
Information. If, if, if there is no mover or seconder for third, then it automatically doesn't go forward. Isn't that correct too?
That is correct. If there's no mover or seconder, then it.
If we're all gonna vote it down, let's just not move it.
Okay, so it's, it's been moved, uh, concert, or it's been moved. So I'm looking for a seconder. Okay, so there is no second. So then.
So, so worship, I'm sorry to jump in. It's quite correct. If a motion is not moved or seconded, then it has not been entertained. The question is then, does it truly come to an end? And does that then mean that we can still get further submissions on it in perpetuity?
That's right. It would be better to move and second it and defeat it.
Second it.
Counsel Whitmarsh seconds it. So, discussion on five, six, five, two. I see Counsel Whitmarsh and Counsel Ferguson. Do you wish to speak to it?
Uh, sh- sure. I mean, I, I won't be supporting this. Um, I think it's in the wrong location and I will not support it.
Thank you. Counselor, okay, um, so you know, for the discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed.
Opposed.
So Counsel Arness and Mayor Froze, Counsel Kunst, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh opposed, Counsel Long opposed. So that one's been dealt with. Five, six, five, two. Okay, so we move on to five, six, five, three. Uh, could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second.
Ferguson, second.
Counsel Ferguson. Discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. All those opposed.
Opposed.
So Counsel Arness and Mayor Froze, Counsel Kunst, Counsel Ferguson, uh, Counsel Whitmarsh and Counsel Long. Opposed, opposed, thank you. That fails. Okay, we can ask Counsel Woodward, uh, back into the room. That's thirsty work dealing with this. Okay, so now we move on to, um. Bylaw five, six, three, zero, and, um, Counsel Woodward and all your, we, we went through a learning process on the first ones, um. Well, we move and second them so they get on the floor. If council wishes to consider it further. Uh, it's referred to the next meeting. If council wishes to not deal with it, then it's voted on. And, uh, if it's defeated. Uh, then it's off. But if it is, um, passed, then I will be reconsidering so we can refer them. All, all, all for it. So five, six, three, oh, uh, so we'll move it comes along.
Yeah.
And a seconder. Counsel Kunst, uh, discussion on five, six, three, zero. Counsel on.
Yeah, I'm gonna support this one and I don't know about the referral that you're up to, you know, that can discuss, but I think this, this is probably one of the best ones. You'll notice it's CR one, which means it was one of the. First ones in, they came in on time. The location, and that's what we're dealing with here is, in my mind, probably one of the better. Uh, it's in the, an area that is not, uh, you know, on a direct streetscape with, uh, it's not near schools, it's not near anything. So. I'm very much in favor of this one and I don't feel it needs to be referred. I think it should just be passed in my opinion. We'll see how it goes.
Thank you. And, uh, Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Mr. Mayor. So we're, we're, you're gonna call the vote on the bylaw itself or do you need a referral motion?
Yeah. If there's an indication that council would like to see this proceed, we should then have a referral motion before we vote on it. If, if council feels that, uh, based on land use, that it should not proceed, and then we can vote on it and that, that doesn't. Proceed any further. So it's, it's kind of a balancing act. We have to, to, to find, find that out.
I see the challenge. So for me, I'll just be clear that anything in the car both exchange area, I'd like to, uh, see, stay alive for now, uh, it. To consider them further. But not approved them tonight, not approve them tonight.
That's, yeah, I, I totally hear. Thank you. Uh, Counsel Kunst, I think, I think a referral motion's in order.
Okay, yeah, so never mind. I'll, I'll just, uh.
Move referral. For the next meeting to consider the, uh, land use implications. Okay, it's removed. Is there a seconder on the referral? Counsel Whitmarsh seconds. Discussion referral, Counsel Long, your hand still up if you wish. No. Counsel Wood, okay, thank you. I'm gonna call the question on the referral on five, six, three, zero. All those in favor. And opposed, repose, that comes along opposed referral. It carries. Thank you. Okay, so we move on to, uh, bylaw five, six, five, four, and I have a motion for five, six, five, four. Counsel Whitmarsh and a seconder. Have a second. Counsel Kunst, discussion.
I'll call, I'll make a referral motion.
Okay, it's Counsel Whitmarsh moves referral. Counsel Woodward, do you second it? Counsel, uh, Woodward, do you wish to speak to the referral? No, counsel long on the referral.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not supporting it. I don't think we need, uh, more than one. And I already supported the CR one, so I won't be supporting referral or keeping it, you know, whatever.
Thank you. Call the question. All those in favor of referral. Opposed. That's a long post. It's referred. Thank you. And we'll move on to, uh, bylaw five, six, five, five. Will be Business Centre Limited, uh, of a motion to put on the floor. Motion. I need a mover.
Can I clarify the bylaw number that you wrote?
Oh, sorry, five, six, five, five. Will be Business Centre Limited.
But that's been before.
Five, six, five, seven.
Five, six, five, seven, I'm not.
No, it was five, I'm sorry. I'm on the, you're right. I'm on, I'm reading off my report. You're falling into that trap. Five, six, five, four, five, six, five, seven. That's right.
Oh, okay.
And where it's at again, Mr. Mayor? Uh, it's. Yeah, five, six, five, seven. Yes. So that's the, um, North Line Shopping Center Limited. Thank you for that. I, uh. Fell into the trap, which I warned everybody vote, and then I fell into it. I was reading off the report, not the, not the agenda. So we're on to bylaw five, six, five, seven. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Counsel Whitmarsh and seconder. Have a second. Counsel Arness and seconds, five, six, five, seven. And this is, uh, North Line Shopping Center Limited, uh, Counsel Long.
Yeah, I don't support this. I don't think that's a good location for, uh, for a shop. So, no, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward.
Uh, yeah, I tend to agree, but I did want to take some more time. I am struggling. Just wanted to let everybody know. I'm struggling a little bit with the volume. We kept getting submission emails. Coming in from the clerk right up to the meeting start deadline. So, you know, I want to make sure I haven't missed something in some of these submissions. Um, so I would, uh, tend to agree with that assessment, but I did want to take some more time. So I would like to see this one kept alive at least.
So if you, do you want to move referral? Okay, seconder to referral. Counsel Ferguson, so. Um, it's, it's been moved by Counsel Woodward, second by Counsel Ferguson to refer, for future considerations, uh, and, uh. See a list there. Counsel Whitmarsh, do you wish to speak to referral?
Um, yeah, I'll speak to refer. I, I, I don't want to refer this one. I, I think it's a poor location. It's, uh, close to the high school. It's a regular area for high school students to go. And, uh, I don't think it's an appropriate location, so I'd rather us not refer it and just defeat it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so no further discussion. So I'm gonna call the question on referral. All those in favor. Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so we have Counsel Arness and Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Long, Counsel Kunst opposed. So we're back on to five, six, five, seven. Let's call the question on five, six, five, seven. All those in favor. Counsel Woodward.
So I just want to clarify.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, so now it's referrals failed, so.
Yeah, so now I'm in a bit of a position to, to make a decision prior to having a chance to make sure I've not missed a submission. I'll accept that the majority, um, want to proceed to, I guess, rap, resolve this one by voting it down. I'll, I'll vote it down, uh, with the group if that's the vote, um, just because I do share some of those concerns, but. I wish we had some more time. I mean, I, all I wanted to do was make sure I haven't missed a submission.
I understand. Yeah, thank you. Call the question on five, six, five, seven. All those in favor. Those opposed, oh, Counsel Ferguson's in favor. Those opposed, um, opposed, Counsel Arness and Mayor Froze, Counsel Kunst. Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Long, Counsel Woodward and Counsel Ferguson opposed. Is that correct, Counsel Ferguson? So.
Kind of against it.
It's failed. Unanimously. And we wa- move on to, uh, five, six, five, nine. Counsel Arness and.
Recuse. Yes, thank you, worship. I need to recuse myself as being an F V R R representative next to the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're back on. Uh, so a motion for five, six, five, nine. Counsel Long and a seconder. Have a second.
Second.
Counsel Whitmarsh. Uh, discussion on five, six, five, nine. Counsel Long.
Yeah, I, I support this one. I think it's, uh, it's off the beaten trail. Um. It doesn't seem to be as obvious, uh, in the, in the town site, which I, I prefer. And I think, I'm looking at this from a geographical perspective that. You probably shouldn't have a few sprinkled around. I don't think we need to have eight or more, but I mean, Brookswood probably shouldn't have one. So I, I actually support, uh, just carrying through with this as I did with, uh, the one in the fiscal one on dual first.
Thank you. Counsel Kunst.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I'm not really in support of this one. It is right next to a library. Um. You know, um, I know I suppose the geographically, you know, maybe it's a good idea to have one. In this area, but I'm just not crazy about the location. And after some of the public feedback from professionals in the area, um, I will not be supporting this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Uh, yeah, I won't, I won't be supporting this one. It's, uh, as Counselor Kun suggested, it's right beside a public library. It's in a building that's largely professional. And, uh, I don't think it's the appropriate location. Uh, while Brookswood might be a good location, this location in Brookswood is not appropriate. So I won't.
Counsel Woodward. You, you're muted. You're muted.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So I, yeah, I concur with, uh, sentiment of my colleagues here. I mean, I think the next to the library doesn't really work for me. Um, I, I don't know how we're gonna not end up with eight if we keep approving them everywhere, as Counsel Long seems to want to do. So I would, I would like to, uh, see the end of this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
I'm not approving them everywhere.
Uh, Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, uh, it's my turn to speak. Thank you. Uh, I, I actually agree with what's being said by my colleagues. I think the library. And also looking at, as we've mentioned earlier on, as even Mr. Back and mentioned, whether we're gonna go with a full eight. Uh, certainly in future, we can certainly go, but I think this is one that I won't be supporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna call the question on third reading for five, six, five, nine. All those in favor. And all those opposed. So Counsel Kunst, Mayor Froze, Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Woodward. So that one's failed. Okay, so that takes us to the end of, um. And thank you. That's, uh, you know, certainly went smoother and I thought this is not an easy process. And I know we, uh. You know, we all are, are struggling to make, make this work. And we know that with twenty applications, we're not gonna have twenty approvals and, and, uh. I don't want to say there's winners and losers, but it's tough for, uh, every member of council to, to go through all of this and, and, uh, and make those decisions. And we're not always gonna agree, but doesn't. But I, I really respect the will of council on this. And, and again, I know there's a lot of people that are watching and, and are very interested in this process. And it's the first process for us. And it's, um, I can tell you, it's, it's everyone on council struggling to make sure that we make good decisions and, uh. And, and it's not, it's not easy, but we're doing the best we can. And, uh, and we'll move forward with, uh, in the next time with the ones that were referred and with a new bunch that are coming. So that takes us to the end of bylaws for third reading. We want to buy laws for final adoption. I one is, is a highway closure dedication removal and disposal, uh, bylaw five, six, three, zero. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Counsel Long and a seconder. Have a second. Counsel Arness and discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor.
Right.
Opposed. Carries unanimously. We want to I two, highway closure dedication removal and disposal, bylaw five, six, four, nine. Can I have, uh, motion, please?
Ferguson, so moved.
Ferguson moves it second. Have a second. Counsel Arness and discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed. It's carried unanimously. Thank you. I three, highway closure dedication removal and disposals in Terra bylaw five, six, three, eight. Have a motion, please. Counsel Kunst and a seconder. Have a second. Counsel Long, discussion, seeing none. Call the question. All those in favor. Opposed. And that carries unanimously. Thank you. I four is official community plan amendment and reads on the application number one zero zero one five three and development permit application numbers one zero zero nine three seven and one zero zero nine three eight. Best of properties at two is the bylaw five, three, nine, four, and bylaw five, three, nine, five.
So move Ferguson.
On the, on the bylaws, uh, Counsel Ferguson moves the bylaws, seconder on the bylaws. Counsel Whitmarsh discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. And opposed.
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward opposed. The bylaws carry on development permit applications number one zero zero nine three seven and one zero zero nine three eight. Have a motion, please. Counsel Kunst, second by Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Opposed.
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward opposed. It carries. Thank you. We want the correspondence, uh, two items of correspondence. Can I have a motion to receive both?
We'll oversee.
And Counsel Ferguson seconds. Discussion, seeing none, call the question. All those in favor. Opposed, carried. Thank you. We have minutes of committees, Recreation, Culture and Parks Advisory Committee, and Tree Protection Advisory Committee, Agriculture Advisory and Economic Enhancement Committee. And Council Process Committee. Can I have a motion to adopt, um. And re- and receive, uh, and receive the minutes of the council advisory committee, the recommendation. Motion, please. Counsel Long, second. Seconder, Counsel Whitmarsh. Any, there's emissions discussion, seeing none, call the question. All those in favor. Opposed. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we move on to the American Council Report. And while they get that ready, I gotta bring something up here. Just laughs and giggles. There we go. All right, have to get my create memories, not garbage background up. As your port. Very good afternoon, everyone. Um, as Zero Waste Chair, uh, I've been busy promoting our annual campaign. At Zero Waste, and so that's why I brought up my background of Create Memories Not Garbage. I've, uh, had several news. News agencies contact me to talk about this. It seems to be one of those fun stories to talk about every year. And, uh, we remind people to create memories, not garbage, and to be thoughtful and gift giving, decorating and celebrating, uh, with a view towards reducing waste. And casting la- and creating lasting memories with loved ones. Although Christmas looks different this year, there's still many ways to create memories, not garbage, as we get into the holiday spirit with loved ones, both near and far. The Merry Memory Maker web app includes a hundred and seventy low waste, uh, gift ideas. Organized by price range and directory, and a directory where to find each item locally. Reducing holiday waste doesn't mean overhauling your lifestyle and giving up beloved traditions. If we all commit to making just one change this year, then those small actions can add up to make a big difference. And, uh, the, uh, website at Met- Metro Vancouver has a lot of different ways to, to get gifts, uh, that, uh. You know, reduce our waste. And you can do it by wrapping them in T-tells or, or T-shirt or something, or finding, uh, gift. Cards for restaurants to support our local business to, to give to people their favorite restaurants, or a lot of ways that we can, uh, reduce what goes in the landfill. So. Just to be aware of it and, uh, and, and to have a good Christmas. Uh, today at, uh, three P M, uh, Donnie, Dr. Bonnie, uh, provided an update. And I have the highlights here in front of me and I'll just, uh, go over them. Uh, B C health officials have extended a widespread ban on social gatherings with anyone outside of one's immediate household through the holiday season until January the eighth, twenty twenty-one. Wow, that's gonna, yeah, impact all our family, uh, the holidays, but I, I'm, I'm sure we all understand. A Monday provincial health officer, Dr. Bonnie Henry, also extended the requirement to wear masks in indoor public spaces and the ban on adult indoor and outdoor team sports until the same date. This means British Colombians will not be able to get, get together with anyone they don't already live with, not even in parks, backyards or restaurants to celebrate the holidays. Drive-through holiday events that allow people to stay in their vehicles with members of the households can proceed. Events such as a drive-in movie have a capacity of fifty vehicles. Drive-through events such as toy drives can also go ahead. Drive-through events such as toy drives can also go ahead. So those are the highlights that were just handed to me. Uh, certainly, uh, maybe not expected. I think we're a little bit wishful thinking that we wouldn't have these restrictions, but these are, uh, the restrictions that we have to live with now. But thanks to technology, uh, and we can still meet with our friends and loved ones through, um, electronic means, FaceTime, Zoom, uh, whichever method you can do and, and, uh, you know, to keep the contact up, especially with those people who are living alone, or, or seniors and elders in our community, to make sure that they are, uh, not, don't feel left out. But, uh, certainly a different year this year and, uh, everybody, my heart goes out to everyone that is gonna miss that intimate time with their friends. So, uh, we'll make the best of it, and we'll get through this. This will end. Uh, there are talking about vaccines coming and sooner than what we thought. So we just have to be hopeful, but we also have to ensure that we do stem this, uh, pandemic. So, thank you for that. Uh, so with that, everyone, stay safe, stay healthy, and, and please wear a mask. Uh, it's, uh, as in Translink, we say wearing is caring, and that's because we're doing it for others. We're not doing it for ourselves. It's like wearing a seatbelt, you know? You don't expect to get in an accident, but we always wear a seatbelt, and it's no different than wearing a mask. It's, it's really a, uh, a way to help prevent the spread of this, um, deadly disease. Uh, meetings I've been to, it's, uh, there's Metro Board Meeting, it was the inaugural meeting, uh, of the year. Every year, there's an inaugural meeting. They'd say that Chair Sav Dollywall and, and, uh, Vice Chair, uh, Mayor Linda Buchanan, uh, were reinstated in their roles, uh, and so it's good to see, um. There was a Fraser Health CEO update to stakeholders, uh, Translink have, uh, several committee meetings and also the Mayor's Council Meeting. And again, it's, uh, every year, there's a, a vote. And so Jonathan Cote has, uh, retained the chair for the next year, and I was successful in retaining Vice Chair for the next year. So we continue to do, uh, with the work and, and keep consistency, stability in, uh, during these three, uh, trying and trying times. And, uh, on last Friday, uh, afternoon, Port Metro Fraser Valley Mayor's Committee Meeting. So the Port Metro Vancouver gave us an update on, on their, what they're doing with Terminal Two. And, and I raised issues of, again, always raise the issues of the trains coming through our community and, uh, programs that, uh, will be forthcoming. And, uh, they're looking at in the next triage of, of programs to, to, um, really take a look at what, uh, they can do. And Langley, there's a lot of projects that are proceeding on the other side of the river and throughout, um, the lower mainland to alleviate the congestion caused by lo- more frequent and longer trains. So that was brought to attention and also brought to their tension, the need to collaborate with, uh, other stakeholders on flood mitigation. And, uh, certainly they're in- involved with that, again, with a Fraser Valley, um, uh, basin, flood basin, they're working with them, and we, we need to continue to work on that. So those are some of the things I did. And Counsel Rick, Rick, you're also attended the Metro Board Meeting, Inaugural Meeting. So that's my report for this week. Uh, thank you very much. And we, and if counsel has anything to add, you open up them, and I'll get back to my agenda here.
Congratulations on being re-elected as Vice Chair of Translink, your worship.
Thank you. It, uh, luck, fortunately, it was an acclamation for both Jonathan and myself. It's good to see the support, but, uh, maybe nobody else wants to do the job. I don't know.
Nobody else wants that.
That's right. But, uh, certainly busy, busy times in meetings this morning. As you know, Translink, uh, has been attacked. It's all over the news, uh, with the, um, in their, uh, their data, uh, through, um, malware, and, uh, they're working through that. It's, uh, they've been very, as quick as they could, open with the public and letting the public know with the information that they can give out and, uh, be responsive to the public's needs. But, uh, luckily, uh, credit card information has not been, uh, jeopardized. It's, uh, held by a third party and also location, um, information on the different apps is held by a third party and is, and is not subject of the attack. So they're working their way through it. But certainly, this is a, a serious event. And it's just one more thing we really didn't need at this time. But there are criminals out there that, uh, do this, and, uh, uh, we have to be vigilant, and I know our staff are really looking into it and, and, uh, making sure that our processes and controls are in place. Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
We, I always have a public service announcement, uh, on behalf of the Liquid Waste Committee. Pharmaceuticals do not flush them down the toilet. They cause a problem in the, uh, digestive systems within the sewage treatment plants. Second thing, grease. A lot of people don't realize that. You wipe the grease container oil or not, meaning, uh, cooking oil, that is, and grease from, uh, bacon or wipe them, and you put them in the green bin. Thank you very much from another public safety now to.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson. Okay, so now we'll move on to, uh, other business, and we have Counsel Arnesson. Uh, Counsel Arnesson, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, I'm just going to read the last couple of paragraphs, cause counsel would be familiar with the wording. Uh, therefore be it resolved, the township of Langley continue its efforts to urgently reduce its dependence on fossil fuels and work towards carbon neutrality. And further be it resolved, the council lend its support for all current and future policy objectives such as divestments related to weaponry investment portfolios within its domain and jurisdiction to achieve in or, uh, sorry, to achieve. I didn't say that very well, within its domain and jurisdiction to achieve in order to promote the values of continuing to build a safe and sustainable community. I so move. And your worship, if I could speak to it, but I need a seconder.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Uh, may I proceed, your worship? I hear silence.
Muted. Here, I'm asking for a second or three times and without you hearing me. Counsel Arnesson, please go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, worship. Um, as counsel will recall, we had approximately a month ago, a delegation that came to council, and they were very passionate about their interest, uh, with respect to, uh, carbon neutrality and moving away from this dependency that we currently have. That's very much deleterious to our climate action efforts as well as, um, armaments. And so, um, in consideration of their efforts on a community level, I thought I would bring it forth to council for consideration. I just wanted to point out that, um, this is a motion that's more or less based on moral suasion as opposed to what might considered by some members to be our jurisdiction or area of interest about something, you know, that we have control over. So I just want to use the example from the past of a shark fin soup group that came to council, and they were very, uh, interested, uh, in getting council to endorse a ban on shark fin soup. Uh, some council members, as I recall at the time, were concerned that why should we vote for this? Because we in fact don't control that. That's a federal issue. That's fisheries. You're talking to the wrong, uh, government. Uh, but my opinion about that is really reflective more of the idea that social connectivity with these different groups in our community is very important. So I think I brought this forward to help to amplify the voice that they had. I think we're doing an amazing job. I just wanted to point out that I did do some research, and I found out that the township does not directly in any way through its investments, support weaponry. However, I, I think that for me, this has to do with our community charter and for making safe communities. And I think it's something that we should proud, be proud to be able to say that we take as the ability to speak, uh, in a leadership role on behalf of these values. So it really is a values-based proposition. So whether or not we, uh, prove this or not, I just think it's important that the local, um, community gets a sense that they are collaborating with us and that we do hear their concerns. So that's why I brought this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Woodward?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to divide this. I think the first one has pretty significant implications. The second one is about, I don't know, I don't even know what it's about, actually. So I'd like to divide it if I, if I may.
Cer- certainly, um, uh, move to devise, second to divide, do a quick, quick show hands. Okay, and all those in favor? Division, it's been approved. Thank you.
So, uh, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind debating them separately if that's okay with you.
Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah. Uh, so I, I'd just like to speak to the first one, cause I think that that one's probably the one we need to talk about. I need to get some clarification from staff. Have, have we not already kind of done this? I, I mean, I, if we declared a climate emergency as a council, which I, I did express, you know, that we were doing that without costing. Um, and here we are again, sort of, continue its efforts to urgently reduce its dependence on fossil fuels and work towards carbon. So if we take out urgently, aren't we already doing that, Mr. Mayor? Could I get some clarification?
Mr. Seffy?
Your worship, uh, this is something that I feel ill-equipped to respond to at this stage, not having discussed with the experts as well as not having spent sufficient time understanding the intent in terms of the preamble to the resolution, or the motion rather, that council is, is considering. Uh, so, uh, I'm afraid I can't, I can't give you what, uh, a straight yes or no answer in terms of whether we are currently doing that. What I can say is that we are doing, I think, uh, everything that we, we can. Well, well, sorry, having said that, I'm questioning myself. We are taking great strides towards becoming a, a truly sustainable, carbon-neutral, uh, community and, and reducing our climate, uh, footprint. Uh, I think that's the best way I can, I can respond at this stage, your worship. As I said, without having spent sufficient time given the, uh, the other items on the agenda on this particular, you know, some motion.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I appreciate that, Mr. Seffy. Yeah. Um, I'm not trying to get a report on the fly or anything like that. I was trying to get the idea that I recall, you know, from two budgets now that we've been, uh, you know, expanding electric car charging facilities. We've been, you know, uh, approving upgrades for that. We've been looking at, uh, a plan to get our facility greenhouse gas emissions down, such as the Walnut Grove Community Center that we did at the last budget. You know, a number of initiatives. So I, I feel like we're already doing this. I, if we, if we remove the word urgently. So I'm a little concerned, though, that if we, if we, one, if I vote for this, now all of a sudden, we have an urgently, we must urgently reduce dependency uh, with unknown costs, unknown timeline, unknown implications. You know, I'm lectured constantly about, uh, unforeseen consequences. Um, you know, and, and I don't know how many times I can vote to approve a climate emergency. How many times I can vote on the same thing? Uh, so I don't really know what this is about. I don't know why this is here. How many times can I vote on the same thing? So I think, but again, if I vote against this, now I'm gonna have to read about how I don't support reducing our dependence on fossil fuels. I don't, I don't have a lot of time for this. Is this the reason it takes me six months to, to a year to get a, an amendment to driveway widening? So that's three lines. You know, this is the reason I can't get a staff report back on Smith Neighborhood Plan and two O eight Street. You know, it takes, I know that was in September, now we're in December. I, I mean, at some point, I, I kind of support all these green initiatives, but how many times can I vote on the same thing? Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
I feel like, uh, we, we have done a number of things, uh, as a council to talk about climate change and make decisions. I think we voted on reducing our carbon emissions, the targets of twenty thirty-five and twenty fifty in line with Metro Vancouver. So I, I feel like, um, we are doing these things from what my, uh, understanding is. And, and if, if we're not, um, I guess that's, uh, a conversation we can have at a later point, but I, I feel like we've done this. I feel like we have voted on a number of times and and so, uh, I'm not sure that I'm prepared to move further with it than what we have already done, which seems like a pretty significant, bold step we have done in the last eighteen months towards climate change as a township. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, yeah, it's, it's certainly something where I think we all agree to. It's, uh, we've a lot of, uh, policies in place um, to, to reduce our footprint and reduce G H Gs and, and, uh, that's all in place. But motion looks like, you know, we're to vote against it then, um, because we've heard it already. We're not opposed to the, the what's, then we look bad. If we vote for it, then, you know, whether, what are the unintended consequences, as Counsel Woodward pointed out. So, uh, I'm just gonna ask the, um, the, uh, clerk, um, in our policy, can we table a motion then indefinitely? Then it's not, we voted against it. We haven't voted for it, but we just moved to table it. And then it's, it sits there, but we haven't really made it. It, it's, maybe it's the easy way out, but that'll be one way to say that, yeah, we've heard this. This is important. We're already doing it, but we don't have to vote against it. We could have a motion to table it. And then it's, it sits there, um, if council wishes to do that. It is, uh, a process. Mr. Backen? Or, or just vote on this one. It's fine, too. Mr. Backen?
No, no, thank you, your worship. Uh, I'm gonna make a suggestion that may not be appropriate, but I, I think I can see the dilemma. If we look at the paragraph literally, it says, "Be it resolved, the township line continue its efforts to reduce its dependence on fossil fuels, working toward carbon neutrality." That's rather benign. It's this word urgent, uh, that would tend to presuppose that there's a different priority than before. And I don't know if that's what the mover actually intended, as opposed to simply getting, uh, confirmation. We seek to continue with what we're doing. So one option would be to table it. The other option would be either by friendly amendment or by, uh, formal amendment, just to simply delete urgently.
Yeah, Counsel Arnesson, are you, uh, amenable to removing the word urgently?
Uh, let me see. Oops, gotta mute.
You're on mute. You, you accidentally muted. There you go.
Um, thank you. Uh, thank you, worship. Um, I'm amenable. Uh, I understand it didn't, uh, really appear to me that there'd be a problem with the word urgent. I guess it's the same problem some people have with the idea of a climate emergency, that there is, you know, something alarming. Uh, you know, preferably, uh, when I look at this motion, I don't really think that it's outside of what we're doing, but I do think that it recommends in principle the direction that we're going. That was really what the intention was. So if you want to take the word out urgently, as some people interpret that as being, let's step it up a notch. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm happy if somebody wants to move that amendment. And I'm also equally happy if you want to table it and then later on make a determination one way or another, or just leave it on the table for, forever.
Okay, so by unanimous consent, uh, motion to, uh, to remove the word urgently. If, if there's no opposition, we'll, we'll just take that amendment. I don't see any, um, so Woodward, do you hand this up? You're okay with the amendment? Okay, so on the motion as amended, uh, any other speakers? Counsel Arnesson, you hand this up. You're okay? Okay, so I'm gonna call the question on the first part as amended. All those in favor? An opposed, anybody opposed? It carries unanimously. Thank you. All there is in a word, eh? But the intent is still there. And so the second part, uh, discussion on the second part, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, I, I, again, I, I don't understand what this is about. I mean, I, maybe I just don't understand it. I mean, I'm, I guess I'm kind of new here. I don't have six years on council like Counsel Arnesson. I don't really know why this is here. Um, I also, you know, I kind of struggled with some of the wording. Um, council lent its support for all current and future policy objectives. So I'm lending my support to policy objectives in the future that I don't even know what they are. Um, so again, with this wording, but then apparently if I vote this down, now I support weaponry investment? I mean, this has nothing to do with me. I mean, can I, can I focus on what I have jurisdiction over? Can I fix some roads, build some sidewalks, maybe prevent a library or two? That's a financial boondoggle. You know, can I, can I work on stuff that I can actually do? Um, as opposed to now being suggested somehow I'm supportive of weaponry investment portfolios if I don't vote this down? Um, so again, I, I don't really know what this is about. I don't know how I'm supposed to support all future policy objectives when I don't even know what they are. So again, uh, not really sure what the point of all this actually is.
Counsel Arnesson?
Thank you, worship. Maybe we should weaponize the libraries. Maybe, you know, we'll just combine them as a hybrid. Um, yeah, I, I understand that it is a struggle because this is not something and why I've actually never brought a motion like this before. Uh, I do understand that it can be a challenge to look at something prospectively and say, what would the implications be? Uh, does that mean that I'm somehow bound now interminably to some outcome that I can't foresee at the moment? It was not my intention to create that kind of sense of, you know, it's like saying, um, and I understand people don't want to vote against something that seems like, you know, it would, it would optically maybe not be the best. So I, I guess people just have to vote whether or not they think that this seems reasonable to them, that, you know, we, we like to take a position and the position, even though we're not doing it personally, is, yeah, that we don't actually support investing in weaponry. So, you know, so that's the nature of it. I don't think it needs a huge debate. Either you think that this is reasonable or you don't. And like all other council decisions, I think we always need to be in a position to be able to defend what we say one way or another, whether it's popular or not.
Counsel Long?
I'll move it and table it because you never know. Maybe there'll be a weapons plant though sometime in the future.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, move by Counsel Long, second by Counsel Woodward for the discussion on tabling it.
I got some of that.
Counsel Woodward? On table, on tabling. I don't know if this, is there a discussion on table? If we table something? I don't click. No, there's no discussion. It's just a motion to table.
Do you have to know when to?
No, just tabled. I'll call the question on tabling.
All future policy objectives are provided.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Arnison opposed. Motion's tabled. Okay, move on to O two, uh, Counsel Woodward.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Before I move it, um, I did, uh, want to move it as an amended version, uh, which I claim. I've already emailed the amended version to Ms. Bauer to assist. Uh, Ms. Bauer, maybe you can read it, uh, just to make sure we have it. The amended version only makes sure that, uh, I'm proposing five thousand to Langley Food Bank and five thousand to Sources Langley Food Bank. Um, I so moved that. So, maybe Ms. Bauer, if you want to read that, just to your counsel's consideration, and then I'll move it.
Sure, if you can read, Ms. Bauer? You're not, you're not on, you're muted. There you go.
The amendment now reads, "Therefore be resolved that Council donate ten thousand dollars from Council contingency with five thousand dollars to the Langley Food Bank and five thousand dollars to Sources Langley, for Sources Food Bank Langley, to provide Christmas dinners to Alder Grove and/or Langley families in need due to the ongoing pandemic."
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, there's a second there.
No second there.
Second at Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson seconds.
Don't all, don't all jump up at once to second this, uh.
Okay, Counsel Woodward.
If we, if we have, it's pretty simple logic. If we have ten thousand dollars for a, a dead tree in a parking lot, um, I think we have ten thousand dollars for a one-time pandemic-related donation to Langley Food Bank. Thank you.
Good. Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Yes, and I think that some of us are, uh, donate on a regular basis to some of these charities. Uh, I know I do, and perhaps other members. I'm sure most members of council do as well, including yourself, Mr. Mayor. Um, what I did want to say that is part of this motion, he's thinking about a hundred dinners, and I know that, um, the guy that runs, um, the Alder Grove, um, Food Bank, uh, Jim Callamance, uh, he's pretty, uh, good at, um, uh, moving money around and moving food around. He might be able to do better than that. Are you bound by those numbers, Counsel Woodward?
No, of course not. Counsel Ferguson, if people can find greater efficiency than I can anticipate, uh, that was a number that was, that was provided to us by one of the food banks.
Okay, that was it. That's just, I, I say, as long as it's basically there's an opportunity for them to be as frugal and also, uh, efficient as possible. Uh, I think it's a good motion. I think this time of year, uh, why not? Thank you.
You, Counsel Long?
Yeah, I can't support, uh, motions that are not based on fact. The, uh, there is no nine thousand dollar dead Christmas tree for three weeks. There's actually a far less, uh, costly one, because of the donations have come in quite handily from the community. Uh, so that is, the figure is absolutely out to lunch, and it's actually there today, and it will be there till a week after New Year. So I think that's about a month anyway, perhaps, uh, slightly longer than a month. So I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Counsel Arnison.
Um, thank you, Worship. Um, I, I do, uh, have a problem with the wording of the motion. I don't think it was really very helpful to make a reference to another project that was very much supported by the community as well as, uh, the majority of councillors. And nine thousand dollars, according to the public record, is not the amount of money that came from Council contingency for a three-week period for a tree. So, as somebody who does look at prior records of council decision-making, I think it would have been appropriate just to start with something else as a preamble, and then get into the ten thousand dollar donation, which I think is more important than making a reference to, uh, a project that perhaps wasn't quite as palatable to some as others. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Whitmarsh, Marfroze, Counsel Arnison, Counsel Kunst, Counsel Long, it fails. Is there any other business? Okay, I'm gonna ask for motion to resolve to special close for the items on the agenda and on table.
Terminating this one?
Uh, first of all, we have to motion to resolve, so I asked, is there any other business? No. So, motion to resolve?
I'd like to add something.
Okay, go ahead.
Add negotiations.
Okay, so first of all, I gotta get the motion. I haven't, I haven't had the motion yet, so I need a mover. Counsel Whitmarsh, the second there. Counsel Arnison, and then Counsel Long wants to put in uh, personnel negotiations or whatever, okay? Anything else? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed and carried. Thank you. We'll take.
We need to terminate now.
Oh, sorry, motion to terminate.
Davis phoned me. Termination, he said.
All right, Counsel Long, second by Counsel Whitmarsh. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. It'll take ten minutes. Come back. At, um, what I got here? Four forty.